Good morning. It's nine o'clock, May 28th. We're going to open the regular session of the Clickat County Commissioners, noting that all three Commissioners are present and that we just came out of executive session for 15 minutes to have a performance review of an employee. So we'll start with the call to order, roll call, and pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Question, did we ever figure out the clock?
I know.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So we'll move to public comment. We'll start in the room. If you're in the room and would like to speak, please come forward and let us know to the microphone and let us know who you are and where you're from. And the same on Zoom, we'll call on you. And if you can raise your hand, we'll recognize you. And if you can let us know for the record who you are and where you're from, that helps us. Thank you very much. So anyone in the room that would like to give testimony this morning, please come forward.
I've never been before.
Oh, good. Just you're right there on one of the microphones and make sure you push the button. So the green, green light.
Green light is on. Okay.
Hi, I'm Judith Wilson. I live at 154 String Street Road in Centerville. And the reason I'm here is a friend of mine went to Bob Songer's meeting. And I understand that they're, we're trying to close the jail and transport prisoners across the state border or whatever. And I'm like, no, please don't. I believe in local politicians controlling local. I don't want to see it sent away. And I'm a firm believer in police protection. I like being able to call 911 and having somebody show up. That was my whole thing.
Thank you.
Coming in, Judith.
Yeah. Okay, online. Kaylee, good morning.
Good morning. I hope you guys all had a great long weekend and got some rest in. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So I have been watching these meetings religiously for the past four months on the recordings, but now I finally had a chance to get on. I just wanted to thank you guys for all of the work you're putting in. I know that this is a really tough time in our county and in a lot of counties. But I have a real firm belief that we need to focus on our county and not the world as a whole or the country as a whole. And it starts right here with you guys. So a couple of things, the jail. Oh, I forgot to say where I was from. Kaylee Toll from Lyle. So I used to work for the Sheriff's Office for a short time and have, you know, some insight on how everything is ran. I am not a fan of closing the jail, but I am a fan of it being revamped. I have a, let's just say, a close person to me that spent approximately nine days in the Clickat County Jail was having some mental health issues. And on the last day when he got released, he got his medication after asking for it every day. And anybody who has dealt with mental health knows that consistent medication is necessary. I believe that we can turn this jail around. I would be a fan of putting some sort of nurse practitioner or something in there rather than spending the thousands and thousands of dollars on the little heart monitors and stuff because it's, it's not just suicides, it's not just people not wanting to take care of themselves. There are really real medical things that we're, for as much as we're paying KVH, we could pay a nurse and help those people because substance abuse is a really, really rough issue in the county. And shipping them over to the DOWs, what's that going to do? It's just going to put them on the streets in the DOWs when they get released instead of having that help locally. So that's kind of, I go back and forth on the jail. I would rather keep it in Clickat County, but I think it needs a huge reform. And yeah, so I just thank you guys and thank all the commenters for being involved because that's what local government is. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Kaylee. Okay, back in the room. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak this morning?
Candy Magnuson, Goldendale. I went to the meeting Saturday. It's awesome meeting. Thank you Dan for showing up. And I learned a lot. I always learn a lot here. As far as the jail goes, the jailhouse is not a mental hospital. It's not a B and B. It's not a, you know, it's not, it's what it is supposed to be. And people, if you haven't been to the jail, then I feel you really can't say much about it. Bob Songer has offered for tourists that you can come make an appointment. He'll take you through the jail. Okay. And so that's what we need to do. And like I said, it's not a mental hospital. It's not a hospital. It's not a tourist thing. It's there for, to help us take the people off the street that are harming us. So we need that jail here, not someplace else that I called 911 and it takes an hour and a half to get somebody there. So keep the jail.
Thank you. Okay, back online. If you could raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Okay, me that's unmuted. Did you wish to speak? Nothing? I'll give you a couple of minutes. Back in the room. Mr. Pebble.
Good morning. Mark Pebble from Dallasport. I have three quick items. Number one, I agree with the 5% sewer rate increase. Number two, I agree with closing the jail and you're going to save money by moving them to Norcore. I read your, what was online this morning. And number three, I see there's a $250,000 grant for the airport. The airport, we need that, those vessels. The PUD is holding up the money to get the water vessels. And without those, the airport does not have fire flow. Anyway, that's, that particular item itself is holding up growth at the airport. So either you don't get it, you don't grow the airport, or you get them and you get the fire flow. That's the two choices that we have. And I know they're going to start engineering for phase two, which that's a different story. I'm not even going to talk about it. But please tell the PUD to give us the vessels. And the bids are in. I think I believe all our paperwork is done. And anyway, if you do that, I'll take you back to the office today. Thank you.
Thank you. Back online. Is there anyone on Zoom that would wish to speak this morning? Just raise your hand. So we can see you want to talk. I don't see anybody. Roger Nichols, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Mine is just a question from the previous speaker. I'm unaware of what those vessels he's talking about might be. If anybody wants to let me about that, I'd be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. And so back in the room. Adrian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to speak about the airport where I, our, our, our business and our company uses the airport significantly. It's a major, major growth factor for Clickat County. And I see on your agenda that there is a $250,000 grant, understanding that grant's not coming from county funds. It seems, I believe it's coming from state funds. But it just reminds me that, by the way, the previous caller asked about vessels. Really vessels, you should think in terms of filters. That is actually what it means. And their, their need is re-filtering their existing pumping operations across the street at the Dallasport Water District, which serves all of the water to the airport. But that, that, that grant is very, very glad, I'm glad to have it available. But it reminds me that there is a $200,000 deposit being held by PUD. Has been held for many, many, many months. That's designed, was always directed to the Dallasport Water District. It is for the, most of it is to be used for those filters or vessels. And I don't, I still, I hear constant excuses on why it's not released to the Dallasport Water District so they can improve their pumping system. I don't ever hear arguments that make sense. I still do not understand why that money isn't being used because the growth of the airport depends upon water being treated. And it is not, it cannot, it is being treated, but the filters are necessary. So they can't really keep building improvements or buildings at the airport unless the water is there to serve it. So please focus on getting that money where it belongs to improve the water system for all, everybody in Dallasport, but mainly the airport. Thanks.
Thank you, Adrian. Okay, back online. Is anyone else ready for testimony this morning or comments? A very quiet morning online. Oh, I see someone. Lynn Mason.
Morning Commissioners. Thank you. My, my comment. I first want to start by saying that I am in support of the jail changing or closing, whatever needs to be done to make it safer for people who end up in our jail. I read the report. Thank you for putting that together and sending that out so we can have a clear idea of what all the options are and what they cost. And I would really recommend that commenters, everyone, read that report because it really gives a clear idea of what things cost. From a fiscal responsibility standpoint, it's pretty clear that Norcore would be the best option. It seems like counties are going towards the regionalities sort of plan where, you know, where the costs, the burden of these kind of expensive facilities are not put on one county, but shared by several counties. And it makes sense. And also reading about Norcore in the report, it, although not perfect, no place is perfect. I feel like it is light years ahead of our jail and what our jail could be. If it was totally revamped, which I feel the county does not have the money to do that at this time or in the near future. So these, these issues need to be addressed now. And those issues seem to be, those options seem to be the best way we should move. I mean, our North Star is making sure people survive the jail. And no one should be subjected to unsafe conditions. And that's, that's what we're really talking about here. We're not talking about creating a hotel or a B and B or anything like that. It's just that people should have their basic needs attended to in a, in a timely manner. And at Norcore, that can happen. They have the facility set up to do that. They have mental health. Professionals on site for, for the inmates and they have, they have nurses on staff. So their medical issues can be addressed in a timely manner. So thank you for, for sending out that information. It was really helpful. And thank you for being there and doing the hard work that you're doing. Thanks so much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Lynn. Back in the room. Please come forward.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm new to this area. Actually, I'm not new. I've owned property here for many years. But I also moved here four years ago and I'm a registered nurse. My name is Frances Klein. And I, I want to say that on this whole closure, I haven't read your pages and pages of documents that you have regarding the, the Norcore switch from taking and getting rid of the jail here. But I'm just very curious about has, has this all seemed to come up so rapidly? And has anyone looked at a grant proposal for this county? There are grant proposals out there all over Washington State, especially for, am I wrong?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, okay. I just thought, I just thought, well, she was looking in my direction. So I thought, so anyways, and I know several institutions, Franklin County, Sunnyside City Municipal. These places have built jails and done them very well and gotten, brought more actually revenue into the community as well. And having people, having jobs, hiring people. I mean, I think shipping things out, we've seen this in Benton City where I lived before, we had a small police department there. They closed the police department and brought the county in. And they told them that first year, well, this is how much it's going to cost. Within five years, it had quadrupled the amount that the city was going to have to pay. And, you know, do you have a certain limit saying, okay, well, we are not going to raise how much we're going to charge you until, say, 2028, 2029? You know, I mean, these are all things that I have seen happen numerous times over and over again. And as far as trying to get this jail up to code, I want to know why it hasn't been up till now. Like they were talking about the vents that the young man hung himself out of. How come, how come they haven't replaced those? That, that seems to me like such an easy fix. I mean, we have, we have things that, you know, healthcare. Like I said, I'm a registered nurse. Has anyone even looked to see how much it would cost to get a registered nurse? You don't have an in-house doctor, but you don't need an in-house doctor. You just need to have a medical personnel, person there to be able to assess. And once you've assessed these people, and especially the mental health people, you assess them and they go over to Norcore. Well, guess what? They're not going to take them at Norcore unless they are medically sound and stable. And it sounds like the couple of incidents that you've had in this place, these people were not. Mental illness is a huge crisis in this country and it's not being addressed.
Thank you. Dallasport Murdoch Council.
Hello, this is Anthony Rizzi. I would like to address the paperwork that was put out by the staff. It, it was a lot of hours in it, but you know what? It was very lacking in a lot of the areas. It did not have everything that needed to be put in there to be, make an informed decision. You left out a lot of things. I, I hearken this to, when you have two different sides, you have an A side and a B side. Whatever, you know, with graphs and, and figures, you can always scale it to the way you want it to be. And therefore, and the other side, you know, you're just trying to sway the other side. I'm sorry, Norcore is the worst decision that you could possibly make because of what the previous speaker just said. There is going to be a lot of things that you cannot do because Norcore won't accept these people. So when you arrest somebody, first of all, you have to book them here. So there has to be a booking facility set up and a holding while you're booking. And then you have to hold them until you can take them to KVH, every person, and get them adjusted or checked out on whether or not they're physically 100% or mentally 100% before Norcore will even accept them. They won't even accept them. So there's a lot of things and all of the travel time and the tying up of a, of a deputy, which we only have like three or four on the road at one time. So one of them at least is going to be running back and forth to Norcore. So that doesn't make any sense. But again, I'm just letting you know that the wonderful paperwork that was put out is very lacking in what really these costs are going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back in the room. Mr. Smith.
How you doing there, board?
Good. How are you today?
Patient, didn't we? I could all use it. Andrew Smith with County. I did attend the town meeting. Found out a lot of interesting things. And I would advise the board to check out the video.
I'm glad there's a video.
There is a video of it. Got too interesting. So I did read up on your jail booklet that you handed out. I'm not a real math whiz, but as a truck driver, I had to learn math quickly. And some of the figures, pros and cons, didn't work out. And through the town meeting, somebody from the other side of the water mentioned if we do send prisoners over there, what happens when Norcore fills up? They've got to transfer it to the state pen or Three Rivers. It's just a thought. I'm all for a fifth option in the jail. We'll do the business inside. How about we reduce freezing staff, hiring anybody and reduce some of the beds? And then move forward and see what we're doing. I do not want to close the jail down. I have found out that we have to keep the jail open. We have three court systems. We have to have moving of personnel, people and prisoners, whatever happens. It's just a thought. I know it's all about money. I understand that. And I do plan to take a tour through the jail here. Found out I can do this. Hopefully. And after going through everything, it's like, you know, we should just keep the jail open for the time being. No rush decisions. And the other deal is, since we're paying taxpayers, if you are planning to close the jail, let's throw out a special ballot. Let's see what the community wants to do here in the county. It's just a thought. I don't know if we can legally do this or not. Let's see what the people want to do or a special town meeting and see what they want to do. Just for the jail, nothing else. And then that $20 million lawsuit thing came up. The person was there. I found that quite interesting. You should really look at the video. And then hopefully you make a good judgment. Take your time, all three of you on closing the jail. Evaluate everything that you want to do. But please update your book that you gave out. Kind of go through the numbers again. I was a little sad. Just a little. You don't have to make any comments on this. It's just a thought. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back online. Gabrielle Gilbert. Good morning.
Good morning. Whatever happens, whatever decision is made about the jail, it is the victims that suffered in that jail that are the North Star to any decision that's made. What they suffered, what their family suffered is unbelievably cruel. And it should have never happened. And if the management of the jail had been better, if the people in charge of the jail had been better, if the systems behind everything had been better, we wouldn't be in this mess. Until that's taken care of, these victims and their families should be treated with respect and empathy. And that is something that this county has not done. And the reality is they are the North Star to any decision that is made concerning this jail. To the, to the report that I read and to the hard work that went into that report, to all of that information, thank you to the county and thank you to each and every person that was part of that report for the hard work that went in and the math that you did. And I trust the numbers more than I trust any kind of emotional ideas coming out of this county concerning the jail. So the reality is whatever you, the Commissioners decide, we respect your decision on this and we support your decision on this. But the victims, ultimately, the families that have suffered, they are the North Star in any of these decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabby. Back in the room. Few minutes. Oh, we can't. I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Eric, did you want to speak this morning? Okay. Okay. I'll try back online then. 2662.
Good morning Commissioners. This is Tracy McCune from Lyle. And today I'd like to just touch on, there's been a lot of talk from you Commissioners about your responsibility for the people in the jail. And my, my question and my comments today are going to be the Commissioners' responsibility for other things in the county, such as if the public works is doing something wrong, especially if it's for his own gain, or maybe Jeff King, or any other unelected official that may or may not be doing something wrong. But when a, when a community member comes to you and says, look, there's something wrong that's affecting me. And the county says, it's your problem, it's post office problem, it's whatever problem. What is the risk, what is the liability or the risk of you county Commissioners not doing your job when you find out that, hey, in fact, it was a county problem? And today I would like you to ask Mr. Hunter to explain what happened with that address problem, to explain how it was corrected and, and how it could be corrected the next time somebody comes forward. It was not my problem or a post office problem. It was a county problem. And I think it's your responsibility to make that, to, to ask him today in a public forum so that he can tell you what the problem was. So next time you don't push it down the road as the, because the, the person's blaming problem. Secondly, if one of these unelected officials or directors, Jeff King, Jeff Hunter, or this, or such, say they, they, they declare an emergency. Now that the storm last January was cold, that's for sure. But I don't think that it, it was a, my opinion, I don't think it was an emergency. Why do I say that? Well, because when an emergency declaration is, is, is done, then the, the person that declares it gets post monies or grants to fix the emergency. And I don't know how you can fix cold weather. We get storms every year. I, I live here because of the four seasons. And that's just part of living here is getting 10 days of cold weather. But if, if they're in fact declaring an emergency and it's based on getting grant money for post emergency and planning to mitigate emergencies, I don't think you can mitigate cold, then that's for personal gain. So my other thing is on the burn ban. So you've So you folks, um, it wasn't on the agenda. You folks approved the burn ban last week. And once I read the burn ban, it has changed. The burn ban is not the same as it's been in the past. Um, and in that burn ban, it talks about the first authority and second authority.
We'll have to move on. Thank you. In the room. Everybody's very quiet this morning. Back online, another chance? Is there someone else that wished to give comment this morning?
David is.
David? Did you wish to speak? You're unmuted. No? Okay. Just raise your hand if you'd wish to speak so we could see that you want to be called on. Anyone else in the room, one last chance? Back online? And no one. Okay, we'll switch to commissioners uh, comments. Mr. Christopher.
Thank you. Uh, first I want to thank everybody for your comments. You may not think so, but I do believe we are listening. We may not respond to you directly in your comment, but it doesn't mean we were not listening uh, to your comment. Um, try to get to some of the questions that were asked. First one I have on my list of, there was actually a question was Roger Nichols and what's vessels and how does that work? And in in it kind of mirrors another question of why hasn't this gotten done? So twenty plus years ago, the county set up a landfill gas fund with gas coming off the landfill, obviously. And there's a joint agreement between the PUD and Clickatack County on where those dollars get spent. Now, who determines where those dollars get spent is the chair of the Clickatack County Board of Commissioners and the chair of the PUD Commission. Those two have to unilaterally agree to actually spend the money. If one of those members refuses, the only thing you have is the power of negotiation. Um, and that is, well, you want your projects. We want this project, meet us in the middle. It can be done. It hasn't been done. Yes, that might mean telling them no until they tell us yes. Unfortunately, when it was my turn last year to have that negotiation, they were well aware. So they got their projects for last year authorized the year before. So they didn't have to have an ask last year, so there didn't have to be a negotiation. And so when I went in asking for money for the treatment center, I was told no. The vessels would be the same way. So I hope going forward, this board uses the leverage it has as fifty percent to say, if you don't want to fund our project, we're not funding your project. That would fix it, but it actually takes courage and I look forward to seeing that courage. Um, and then um, Mr. Nichols, if you want to know what is a clarifier, a a a vessel and and exactly how that operates, I would recommend reaching out to the Dallasport Water District. They are far more knowledgeable on vessels than I am. But that that answers why hasn't it been released to Mr. Bradford? That's why it hasn't been released, in my opinion, anyway. I believe uh, the question of the vents, I believe we've had that answer before. Uh, I believe the board was given that answer, but I, before I comment, I would like to uh, check with staff and make sure I'm commenting actually correctly. And when I know the answer, you will know the answer. Mr. Rizzi, you commented about the paperwork lacking in real costs. And I I would say you, sir, are one smart cookie. Uh, it's pretty easy to see when one argument for option twenty seven actually lists all the expenses, phones, cars, everything else. And option twenty eight doesn't list any of that. It there, I I hope as we move forward, we correct some of these numbers so they're uh, a little more accurate and comparing apples to apples instead of uh, what we want them to look like. Another question of Mr. Smith with fixing the numbers. I hope that can be done. Tracy on explaining how the address was fixed, that's another question I would like to get to the bottom of. So my plan is to ask that question today as well. Uh, the one clarification I will say is when you say the director declares an emergency, that is, that is not true. A director cannot declare an emergency. It is the chair of the Board of County Commissioners that declares an emergency. We can be asked, the chair can be asked to declare an emergency by emergency management, by the schools, by the hospital, by the everybody else that was affected. But essentially it comes down to the board on whether uh, an emergency was um, present or not. Um, and then the burn ban thing you didn't finish, so I can't answer whatever question you had there. Um, and that's all I had. Everybody else didn't really ask a specific question or if I missed it, please contact me and I will answer it offline.
Are you ready, Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to say thank you to everyone for your questions uh, and your comments and for doing your best to make sure that it's not personal. It makes it a lot easier to respond when people are asking questions about county government, not about individuals. I would, uh, I love it when uh, other commenters answer the questions for other peop- for people that went before them. It makes it a little easier for us. For those who haven't seen uh, the jail report, please go on to the county website. It's right in front of you on the main webpage under the news flash. Please read it. If you have thoughts or questions, please email it to us. You can send it to BOCC and that will get at clickattackcounty.org and then that will get forwarded to all of us. We will be having a conversation about the jail on Thursday. So please um, do your due diligence, read it, try to understand it. If you don't understand the numbers, ask questions. Uh, I know we're all reading it. And what you're seeing is is just the top of it. The amount of time and effort that staff put into it is enormous. And I cannot thank staff for doing all of the hard work. And so while under one option, you might be seeing more numbers and another one, you're not seeing it. It's because that's where they were focusing. Those numbers are still there behind it. In order to create it, you just don't see it because then the report might be even longer and people have already commented that it's too long. And I want to say thank you to everyone who gets up and speaks. Public speaking and asking questions is one of the hardest things that that citizens find that they can do. And a lot of people have a hard time speaking in public. So for those of you who get up and and ask questions and give comments, thank you so much. And thank you to the new people who come in, um, who who really care about your community. You care about the county at large, you care about its fiscal health because it affects us all. Someone made the comment and I didn't bold it, so I don't know who, that we need to look locally. Well, I think that's why all three of us sit up here and we ran for local office because we understand that it is the local offices that you have the greatest impact on the communities that you live in. So whether it's the school board or county commissioner. And that's what we, you know, in my first and and only tenure as commissioner, I didn't get on all the state boards. I didn't go to the NACO conventions because I wanted to work locally and not focus. We have state legislators to work on the state issues. As time went on and I got things off my list, then I started working more at the state level. But um, hopefully for those who who take my seat, um, they'll do the same thing and focus and get those things fixed here locally so that once the county's operating well, then we can start looking up. But until then, you have representatives for that. Go call them. Uh, Mark, um, thank you. I love the way you you come up with three items, you hit it quick and be bold and be gone. Thank you for your five percent increase suggestion. We have a public hearing. Um, we're not allowed to take testimony right now, but I will take it into a fa- into account as always. The grant for the airflow and so when the county back in two thousand and twelve entered into the agreement and the county spent a lot of money to upgrade the public water system for the, for Dallasport Water System and we entered into that agreement. The county spent a lot of money to upgrade the tank and the size and everything else. And as I've understood it, the airport currently has fire flow and always had, has fire flow. We have uh, a fire hydrant and there is a tank that should have the necessary hours of fire flow that was created when we built that system the first time. I would agree that the, that the vessels um, were designed so that they could be added to when more was needed. But as I've understood, that there, there is fire flow and there has been fire flow. Because if the airport doesn't have fire flow, then nowhere else in Dallasport has fire flow. It, if you're saying that it doesn't meet the additional requirements on the two hours at a certain number, as I understood, that was still there and when we designed it and built it, otherwise we couldn't have built any of the hangars that were built. I agree that those vessels need to be um, installed. The issue that we had was the agreement in twenty eighteen was part of a much larger package where we were going to hook up the well that the county paid to have drilled. Um, and we were going to hook that into the system and have access to that water. The problem was is that the uh, the county came to the table with the um, the landfill gas dollars. The Dallasport Water District got huge grant and loan packages and we were going to do a whole large build out in three phases. And at the last minute, Dallasports, due to their own decision, uh, likely fiscally decided that that was too big of a project and they didn't want to move forward. In the negotiation for the landfill gas dollars two years ago, uh, I made sure that that money that was there to hook the well up uh, was still available. And once those conditions, because there were conditions on that for those dollars um, were met, then that would be have access to get the the well and the pump installed. And that was its original purpose. The new application for just the vessels on their own um, isn't part of that old twenty eighteen. That needs to go between the chair and it needs to go between the chair and the PUD so that they can have that negotiation. And I am in support of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars being used for those vessels. But again, that's a negotiation between the chair. And then it's not unilateral because even though the chair can negotiate for it, the board has to agree that they want to send that over there. So it's not a uni- unilateral, it's the whole board as a whole sends that over. Once we get the application, I believe that application's on file. So that's a little bit more to it. I mean, when we look at Dallasport and Water, it's very complex. There's a lot of pieces to it. But in the end, it will get done. It just takes, like all things, time and money. So that should address Adrian's. Francis, uh, thank you for your, your questions. And when it comes to grants, um, we have many of the departments in the county that are fully funded by grants. Things like our behavioral health program is funded by the state one hundred percent. When we look at our, our public health um, program, uh, one hundred percent of it is funded by the state. We used to put in a little bit of money. When we look at the uh, senior senate, senior services, over seventy percent of that is is funded by grants. I think actually higher than that. We get a lot of money when you look at our overall budget and grants. One of the areas that we don't get money for grants is public. The, the sheriff's office, the courts, there, the grant dollars are very small and that's what our, our tax dollars pay for. When you look at um, at the state level, trying to get grants to build new jails, those are very difficult and they're very competitive. And jails are very expensive. And it's not been a priority of the state. Right now, the priority of the state is mental health and they've been putting a lot of money towards behavioral uh, and mental health and which I'm in full support of that, that definitely, I think we all agree that, that that has to occur and we need to get there. In terms of what it takes to get up to code, that I could delve into a long history of um, jail standards in Washington State that when jails were updated in the eighties or rebuilt in the eighties, we had jail standards. And then I think it was nineteen eighty eight, the state legislature pulled those, that whole program away and the funding for the jails went away and those standards went away. And ever since then, uh, Washington State has been kind of, it's, it's on each county. There's uh, best management practices that the organizations um, have put in place. But there's nothing like what other states, like Oregon has specific jail standards that every, every jail has to be up to code. That lack of jail standards for, from my perspective, is one of the areas that creates a lot of liability for the counties and the state at large because of the lack of jail standards. Because then you can't point back to say, you know, when you get sued. And I'm not talking about any individual thing, I'm just talking as a general. When you can point back to your policies, your procedures and your standards and say, we followed policies, we followed procedures, we followed our standards, that reduces the cost of litigation always. And not having those uh, at the state level, which there was legislation to create those standards this last legislative session that failed. And I would, I would advise you to go and look at that, um, how that failed and why that failed. I agree that there needed to be some changes to some of that legislation, but hopefully we can get that through sooner than later because um, the liability on the county and in all of our, uh, and on our state at large, um, only continues to grow, not get less. Andrew, thank you. Advised to check out the video while I was on uh, my vacation. I watched the video that was available and then it cut off. The livestream cut off right when the, the video started. And I haven't seen it posted anywhere else um, for the actual comments and questions. So if you see that or you find a link, please um, send it to BOCC so it can get sent out to the rest of us. But I have not seen the rest of the video for the comments, uh, the questions and comments. Ms. Gilbert, uh, victims are our North Star, our North Star. When we talk about the jail and I've mentioned many a times, but I see new faces and I love seeing the new faces. I can talk about the numbers, I can talk about the finances. I can't talk about individual occurrences in the jail. I cannot talk about things that are in litigation. It's uh, it only adds uh, further potential litigation to the county and cost to the county. And so while I talk about what I can, um, there are things that we are not allowed to talk about. And so um, thank you for always bringing uh, Gabrielle, bringing humanity to the forefront of the conversations. I think that is very important that we all realize that we're all people. We all have our rights and whether we're in jail or on the street, uh, we still retain our rights. And that's very important and we need to keep that at the forefront, um, those constitutional rights. Tracy. It is not personal gain for Jeff King or Director Hunter uh, when we declare an emergency. This is why I ask people to please not talk about people individually and please um, don't talk about words. Because that creates innuendo that someone has something to gain. These are professionals, they are directors, they are working for the benefit of all of us. They are not doing it for personal gain or anything on the side because there's an emergency. Because we declared that emergency and because FEMA and the state agreed with it, our taxes, tax tier dollars won't have to cover a lot of those expenses that that cold spell paid for. So technically, it is not personal gain for Director King. It is the gain of the county taxpayers at large because all of, we won't have to pay for that. Because we're going to get a lot of that reimbursed by the state. It's the same, that goes for your junior taxing districts, for the schools, they put in money, the PUD put in. Because that was a very expensive storm, we had all sorts of breaks. I can tell you how many people had breaks in their houses and we've all had to cover the expenses of that storm. Thank goodness, we declared an emergency. And thank goodness that be after paying to fix your pipes, you're not going to be having to fix, pay to fix our pipes. And I think that goes a long ways. Those emergency declarations, funding is one piece of it. But the other thing about But the other thing about emergency declarations is it cuts down on the red tape that we all hate. It allows us to go in and fix problems when there's a flood without having a year worth of permitting and process to get it done. We can actually go in and fix the prob- the problems. So there's a lot of pieces to an emergency declaration. And I thank the the chair at the time for declaring that emergency and realizing the necessity of it. And as for the burn ban, well, I don't know what you were asking about. Yes, we updated our burn code last year as people have been asking for it for years. And that's one of the successes that we had. So yes, the burn bans do look different today than they looked last year. Please go on our website and look at our new updated county code to review what the burn ban says. And with that, I'll yield back the time.
Thank you. I'll try to keep mine short. The guy's covered quite a bit. I'd like to start with the easy things and Mr. Nichols, yes, I agree. Visit with Dalsport Water District, get a hold of them. They have a lot of information about those the grant fundings and their process and what they're looking for. I think they'd be of great value to you for information. I do, I am, because I'm the chair, am moving forward with the P U D to work on the gas tax for those vessels. And my next step is to have a personal meeting with Mr. Gunkel, who is their chair at the P U D. So we're in that process now of finding time to get together and talk about that. So it is moving forward. I think one of my bigger concerns revolving around the jail and I'll kind of answer these in bulk today are assumptions, fears and opinions. And there's a lot of things out there that are happening. And when larger things happen in our communities, it does kind of strike us at the heart of what's that going to do to me? Where where? How does that affect us? How does that affect my city? And I want you to know that working with the team that worked on this for uncountable hours, they did address a lot of the things that you brought up, like the nine one one. They did address the transportation. They did address if the transportation didn't happen a specific way, that would take officers off of the streets. And none of those things are happening. That document was gone through with a fine tooth comb with very qualified people outside of our county, including the city officers, the mayors, Department of Corrections at the state level. You know, hundreds of hours and questions were asked and answered about what if? Because we would never want to cut services to the communities ever. So those, that whole document revolves around all those kind of public service plus health and safety at the jail. And I can tell you, it is very important to review that document carefully. I I heard comments today, but within those comments, I heard, well, I didn't review the document. To comment on that document and not have reviewed it, you're still having questions that were probably answered within that document from qualified people, very well qualified people. So I would, I would encourage you to go back and look at that document and what it holds. And that document was built, I can tell you, because this all, we've all entered into this because the fact of the matter is, is we're in litigation. The county has an assault against us, which means not only personal involvement in the litigation, but also financial to the county. So that's why the county commissioners are involved. And that's our jail to or that's our our obligation to be the watchdog there to protect the money for the county and do the best we can to put up a stop gate to make sure nothing else happens and also work our way through these processes with our risk management people. As far as Norcore, I can tell you that the risk management insurance even did a tour of Norcore and the facility and had a high regard for Norcore. In fact, they managed twenty-six jails and they were taking some things back to the other jails that they learned from Norcore that they thought were innovative and and helpful at that level of a jail. We do have fifty-nine jails in Washington State, sixteen of them are regional. Most of them, as I looked into those, were created for the reasons what's happening to Clickedak County. We're small, we're underfunded and we have to provide services, especially with escalated mental health, escalated drug use, that's what lands at the jail. So it's a combination of things. You don't just get in jail because you're a criminal. There's sometimes there's a lot of reasons why you end up there. And we have to create a new system going forward with this new world we've entered into, what our society's become. So it's going to take a hard look what happens through the litigation. And then what happens as we come out and move forward to improving all of our facilities here at Clickedak County. So I just, I caution you to be careful. If you have questions, ask him, but know that that team actually put in hours of due diligence to try to find the answers for the jail and for the public. And I thank you for your comments. It's not easy to come forward. It's not easy to ask questions. And let me see if there's anything else anyone didn't cover. I think that's it for the day. So going forward, thank you. And thank you, everyone online. So I would entertain any motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda. All four items.
I would second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move that we pay the accounts pay them warrants in the amount of three hundred and six thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and nineteen cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million one hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents for the date ending May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Other than, you know, that's a week and it's one point five million dollars darn near, but yeah.
Uh, I think benefit payroll benefit, it's not, that's not how the.
Well, two weeks, but yeah.
Right.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion passes for payroll certification and payment approvals. Commissioner miscellaneous reports and comments. Pardon me?
We vote.
No.
Oh, I did not. I skipped right by that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
I was already an aye.
You were an aye. Okay. And I'll be the aye. I'm the last aye. So motion passes. Moving on.
I do not have any problems with the letter of support for K V H funding. I don't know if we need a discussion or just move on up.
I think we can do that with consensus.
Yes.
Right. I said, I it's got my support.
Okay. So we move to department update, Public Works Director Jeff Hunter and County Engineer Seth Scorola. Good morning.
Morning.
And we're two minutes early.
No. And you remembered.
That's for last week, what happened to you.
Well, it made it easier. We didn't have as much to.
No, I didn't even notice we changed this time from nine thirty to ten. Seems like we do a half hour citizen comment and then a half hour reply these days.
That's almost considered a town hall.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Oh.
That's pretty.
Thank you, sir.
Perfect.
Did you?
Thank you.
I have one more request of you, but I'll get to you offline for that one. Like, this isn't that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right ahead.
Okay, we missed you a lot, or we were here, but we didn't actually discuss what we're doing. So we didn't have anything on the consent agenda and that will just go into the construction program.
All right, our crushing contract, crushing continues in Fisher Hill Quarry. Probably going to be buttoning up this week unless they have some breakdowns. Pickleton area paving, the contractor is installing the wearing course on East and West Market Streets this week. The paving on all the other roads is completed other than approaches and shoulder finishing. Sundale Old Eight contractor is working on excavating the main line and clearing and grubbing. Also, they drilled a hard rock excavation area and will probably be blasting later this week or early next week. Let's see. Also, the temporary closure takes effect today, which is to all but local traffic. On Sundale Road only during the, in that construction area. And striping, we got word today that they have finished the first phase of striping. The second phase will commence after we finish our our overlays and V S Ts for the summer. Now, let's see, road design side of things, Sunnyside Road, design work continues with stormwater design and working with utilities. The bridge bundles, we finally got the okay from Washdott on the consultant agreement. So those should be coming before you shortly for execution. So we can get them started. And design work begins on three federally funded safety projects, which is additional white plastic edge lines, some curve warning signs and road safety plan update as well as a future paving project in the Pickleton area.
Is the road safety plan update just a tabletop exercise or what goes into that?
We've collected more data over our data collection that we just had finished, which is a lot of curve measurements and things. That's going to be incorporated into the document as well as updates on accidents that have happened in the last, I think we had it twenty seventeen was the last safety plan. So it's just going to update it and bring it into the the current statuses.
And then that'll, we'll be able to use that for our next transportation plan for.
Yep.
Got it.
So it'll develop a list of projects that'll be prioritized based on what we're seeing for traffic accident types and concerns. And then, yeah, we'll be able to use that for applying for more grants. All right, that's all I got.
Okay. On the maintenance end, we're, he said, we're grading, brooming sand and brushing. West Side, we're patching. Sail Barn, the slab is scheduled to be poured on the fourth now. Spirit Court, same place, the events that we were a little weak couple or week behind. Morgan Trail Rally went off. It went really well. Same with Ducks Unlimited. The picture is the circus is coming to town. It will be here June fourteenth through the sixteenth is when they'll be open to the public. And they will be in the outdoor arena. And it will look something similar to that picture.
Well, that didn't work. I was trying to share my screen. I killed it.
Oh, I killed it. Uh, let's see, West District Court window, project is scheduled to start Thursday, must be complete by the thirtieth because it is a grant funded pro- uh, project. And the grandstands ADA improvements about half complete.
Question on that.
Uh huh.
So we've talked about the timeline for the handrail going up the stairs in the ADA and covering the beer garden. What I haven't asked you on for an update is what is the timeline on the water bottle refill station?
The one let's see, I can't remember where we we did one in the courthouse last year, I believe.
Right, we were talking about putting one at the
Pioneer Center.
At the fair so that we don't have to have nine million plastic bottles.
Right, right. I don't think we we don't have, we weren't able to get that one in the budget last year. We'll look at it again this year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes. And so that takes care of our facilities and events. So we've had a few things. We have an ATV request. We actually did an ordinance back in, I want to say eighteen. It's to allow ATVs on county roads. Their their league, the state has allowed them for any road that is thirty-five miles an hour and under. We've been approached by somebody on the west side that would like to, has petitioned us for some roads to be posted as ATV routes. So we're looking at those. So those may come forward. They use them, certain people use them for patrolling or fixing, looking at fencing, rounding cattle up, things like that.
So you're just, they just want a a road they can already drive the AT on ATV on to be just posted for it to allow.
Yes.
Just so that people know that there's there.
Yes, if it is an ordinance, then technically the sheriff can write them a ticket for doing it. It actually has to be ordinance by the board to allow for them to ride ATVs on there. On the certain roads that are under thirty-five. Right now, the only places we have them is in Glenwood.
So you have to pick each road? It's not all roads under thirty-five?
No, when we had the hearing years ago, there was a thought about doing that, but there was a lot of pushback from the public back then about mainly from the timber companies that once the ATVs get in the area, then you know, they ride county roads, then they end up up in their land.
I was gonna say, you're gonna start building trails.
Right. And so they were against it. Things have changed to some degree, but this isn't a timber com- country land where, I mean, there's timber there, but it's not it's not holdings by timber, bake holdings by timber companies.
I was gonna say, that is, I guess my concern as a off-road dirt biker for many years in being actively involved in building the trail system in Hood River, which is epic, by the way, if anybody hasn't been there. If it's if this is not done correctly, it could cause issues with trails being built on private property that aren't ours that cross the road. And then you got somebody just going right across the road, never get seen. So I guess that will be a concern of mine going forward that hopefully you guys are able to mitigate.
We look at interconnectivity too, to some degree, and we'll get more into this during the hearing. I'm just going to kind of give you the heads up that we've been approached and that there's a process you go through, but and there's a hearing on it. But we don't want to pick out if there's a small section of thirty-five miles an hour and it's fifty miles on both ends. People aren't going to drive over there, unload their ATV, ride that little patch and then put their ATV back. Chances are, so we're not going to look at something like that typically. Again, they have to be street legal. You you like, you know, your example of the dirt bike.
My dirt bike was street legal.
Yes, yes, I just got.
I had to buy, had to trade in the Yamaha for a K T M in order to get it.
I figured you had to have an Enduro or.
Elk hunting, yep. Snake Snake River, yep.
Okay, but I just giving you the heads up that 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 may come up. We had budgeted for summer help. We would, we have quite a bunch of requests from different communities that we've been working on. Most of it is not, it's it's not like a big project, so it's not, there's not a lot of cost. It's just it would be nice to get a summer help person. Again, it was budgeted. I don't know if we could find one, to be honest with you. We we've kind of shelved it mainly because we weren't sure of the FEMA money. But it looks, we're pretty confident now we'll stand a good chance of recovering some of that. Because again, I've said it before, I'll say it again. We've tried not to come to the board for that. And that was quite an outlay for us for the FEMA event with the the damage in the jail, the damage at Annex Four, the damage at the Pioneer Center. But if we can recover that in FEMA, then we can, we feel pretty confident that we could we wouldn't be coming to you for more money. It's just money we have budgeted to look for a summer help person. Usually we try to get somebody that's, well, we have to get, they have to be eighteen. But usually when we've been very successful with some of our summer over the years.
I would try to find it. See if you can, I mean, there's got to be kids graduating high school that would love their first job that hopefully come back and work for you guys in future years.
So we're hoping for, we have very successful rate of keeping them.
No, that's.
Okay, here's a thumbs up. I didn't see. Okay, good. No.
Okay, thank you. Rodeo Bible Camp, we have this event every year. They have asked us for a waiver. They would like to come before the board. I would not put the board in that situation unless you are well aware of it. Their waivers come through us, but they would like to personally come and ask. They are one of the groups that is a hundred percent kids. It's only kids. And we've waived, they do. And we've waived, they do alternate work for their fees. They've cleaned the grandstands in years past. Uh, for years, they didn't ask for waivers, but, um, with the economy and everything else, they just. They're fortunate enough to get to keep moving forward. I mean. Cause they used to get a lot of contributions and contributions have cut way back. Just don't have the extra money. So they've asked for a fee waiver for their event. We gave them one last year. I just wanted to give you the heads up and kind of get a feel for where the board is. If they're still interested again, it is a hundred percent for kids.
How much work did we get out of them last year?
We get whatever that we value, whatever their waiver is, and then they do that in equivalence. Last year, because our tractor was down, they groomed the arenas before fair for us. This year, they're going to clean the grand, well, tractor works, they're going to clean the grandstands this year and under the grandstands. Which in years past, we've had a pe- pull people out of the office to do. Just because it's kind of a big thing to do and they volunteered to do that. They're very good at doing whatever they volunteer to do.
I mean, I don't see it as a waiver if you're getting the value out of it.
Right.
And I'm, I'm in support of that. I think it, it helps to build good kids when, you know, they're, they're getting actively managing what they're working on.
Um, my opinion has never changed. Um, I don't believe. Uh, we should be charging our youth to use our facilities. Um, or making them work for us to, to get the facilities and I would be in favor of giving them a waiver. To use the facilities without making them work, but I'm alone on that thought, but I've had the same thought for three years.
I appreciate them being responsible. It's a good lesson. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, it's grant cycle. Again, um, lot of the projects we do and like the projects all Seth described today, except for the striping is all paid for by other pe- other money. So, uh, we may have found a way in the past. We haven't been successful, uh, getting a grant for painting the courthouse because they consider that maintenance. But, uh, going through the semi or the, the, uh, the class the other day, or not the class, but the actual conversation with them. If we repackage it as rehabilitating the outside of the courthouse, we may be able to get that grant.
Wow.
So we would like to do that. What we would use is match because it is required to match and the more match you get, the more money you get. However, we get to use stuff we've already done. So we, you know, not any of the stuff we've done for the auditor because that was grant funded also. They're not really that fond of you using grants for grants, but we did pay for the units. So we are able to use at least two of those units as grant funding match, which is good. So we'd like to apply for that grant. And there's another grant that, you know, we would like to get, and I believe that's a hundred percent paid. And that we're looking at, uh, we're going to take another shot at the sidewalks. In Goldendale out to the fairgrounds. Cause we think that would be the best place to do it. And has.
Our, just, just to clarify for the audience, the counties portion of sidewalk, there's a giant city portion.
There is a giant city portion. This would be the counties portion. Um, and if we can get more, if we can get more points, we would even, you know, if the board was okay, we would look at partnering with the city. Especially if the feds are going to pay for it.
I like that idea. I like the, I, I hope that you can get the city motivated on this. Uh, we've had many discussions with the city in the Parks Committee on this. Uh, it is on our radar. I just don't know how, how high it is on the city council's radar. Uh, but at least three of them, it obviously is, because that's three on the park committee. Uh, I'm in full support of, of pushing that. I mean, to me, technically it's a safety hazard right now as everybody's walking from the parade to the fairgrounds. Um, if, if we can at least apply, that would be great. And yeah, sure, grant match on the painting of the building. But i- if we get nothing, we pay four hundred grand to paint the building. So even if I gotta pay a hundred grand to grant match. I'm a happy camper because it's still way cheaper and we can reuse those funds somewhere else and, uh, in maintenance projects.
Okay, that's all we have. Thank you.
Hey, got me excited about this sidewalk thing. I hope you can pull it off.
We're gonna try. We're gonna try.
When do we, when would we know?
Uh, it's a little while, um.
Probably no in fall and if you get it, you build next year.
Yes, exactly.
That'd be big.
It would be, it would be a big, it would, it would be helpful. We'll know, we'll try, uh, because we think that would be a good project. It's the best sidewalk project we have.
I came up during public comments, so I figured I'd ask, how'd the address fix come about?
The address fix came about in that there's limits put on the roads. And, um, so all they did was shrink the limits because. While for us, the addressing is not by parcel number. It, it, your addressing has nothing to do, our addressing has nothing to do with parcel numbers. The parcels are based, the address is based on where the tax statement is sent, not where the, not the physical location of the parcel. So what the program does is automatically, if you wanted to know where, say, one hundred and ten Canyon Road was. It would drop a point approximately there because it puts points every odd and even points every hundred feet along the road. So what we, what the, what our people did is they condensed the length of the road from. Um, seven hundred to seven twenty-five or seven fifty. Therefore, it dropped a point on the road. Cause what it was, it was one to seven hundred. So it actually was four hundred to four twenty-five, I think. I'm going to get that wrong. Something like that. So our GIS people shrunk the limits therefore to drop. That's how it fixed.
And that's just on our internal IMAP program.
Yes.
For mapping only, that's not on our.
Or planning purposes.
Yeah. But I want to tell people it is not a, it's a, it's a point space, basically. It's not tied to anything. It's not a surveyed point. It's not an address.
It, it's just meant to be helpful and not absolutely official.
Exactly.
And foolproof.
But that's only if you search for an address in the search function of whatever address on this.
Yes.
And then it's going to take you to an approximate. And you just said that the road ends before that and then that dropped it off. But then when you search the address, does it take you to the other place in Lyle versus Murdoch or?
It also was basing on alphabetical order. Because the, the program doesn't distinguish between streets and avenues. So they changed that. So it, that's how it comes to that.
Okay.
Is how that does it. But again, it's not, while I know it's very important to one person. In the big realm of things.
It wasn't broken.
It, yeah, and it doesn't, again, if I want to find anybody's address, I want to find, if I pull up your parcel. If your tax statement was.
It was somewhere else.
That would be your address.
Which half of them are, are that way.
Yes.
It, the tie, when you bring it up, it bring, it gives your mailing address, not the, if you want the actual address for that parcel or a home on that parcel. You can go talk to planning, right?
Exactly. You can't get it from us. You can't get it off the program. You are correct. If you're a P O box, like in Dallasport where all their mail goes to P O boxes, that's what their addresses are.
Yes.
Um, one other question that came up during public comment was the jail vents. Um, why they have not been all changed? I don't know whether you can answer that question. Um, or if you need to answer that question offline because of pending litigation. Uh, it's, it's just been a, a heavy public push. That if there was an issue with one vent, why haven't they all been changed? So I'm curious if you can, if you think you can answer that question.
It would be better if we answered it offline.
Said, I think I know the answer to it, but. Uh, and if the answer is what I think it is, unfortunately, because of pending litigation, it would be stupid to tell everybody why.
Right, we, we won't.
It will cost the county to tell everybody why. But. We do that a lot.
Anything else?
Please tell your staff to keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, uh, for posting the list. I think this will be very helpful for them out there. When it gives them the duration of projects and when they think they're going to start and, and should hopefully limit the amount of phone calls I get. Questioning me, uh, which I always try to point towards you, but.
Good morning, economic development. Richard Foster and Keaton are here this morning.
Natural resources.
Howdy commissioners. So I'll start with lead entity. Um, since our last update, we finalized three projects for the grant round. Ranking meetings are in June. Um, we just got surfboard comments back, no concerns. Um. I went over the three projects previously, but I figured I'll just do it again. Um, first project was a, an amendment from a previous grant round. Which the project is all the way up in sort of Yakima Nation territory on the Clickitat. Um, there's Howard Lake Road. Being removed. Um, there was some, uh, underestimation for large woody debris and post-assisted log structures. So the amendment is for around four hundred thousand dollars. Seems like a lot, but this was a project that was sort of highlighted by the state last year. For its sort of importance and, um, they just thought it was a really good project. And this amendment, along with some other, you know, B P A, there's a bunch of other funding sources that they're putting together for, um, for their second round of funding. They should push it over the finish line. Uh, secondly, there's a final design on Snyder Creek. I don't know if y'all have been up there. You go up that real sort of. Uh, grade that's really sketchy and all busted up. There's the former log yard, which is, you know, the creek runs along the left-hand side and there's a path that runs up. If, uh, they're trying to take that stream because it's real incised, they're trying to spread it, you know, there's like this mound. I don't know if y'all have been up there. There's like a big mound. They're going to push the stream through that way and, uh, wet the floodplain up and, uh, I don't know how that's going to affect the stream going down through the, the former mill site. But, um, they're going to take that stream and sort of move it around that floodplain. So that's a three hundred thirty thousand final design project. Which should hopefully go to, um, the actual project, which should be in the upcoming grant rounds. The next one is an acquisition by Columbia Land Trust, um, which is if you take Glenwood Highway and you look down, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what river mile it is. But it's a fairly distinctive parcel, um, for two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And I guess the key feature about that is when, um, Columbia Land Trust acquires a property, it maintains, um, its public land status. So I know it's sort of a fairly busy area for, you know, recreation on the Clickitat and it will maintain, you know, uh, public status. So people can float down it, you know, with no big deal. They can walk on the land. Um, it's pretty out there and remote. But when Columbia Land Trust acquires something unlike other sponsors, people can still, um, use it. And then after the conclusion of the grant round in June, um, I'll be working with our sponsors for project recruitment for the next grant round and upcoming grant rounds. Working with the technical committee to update our lead in any strategy, um, you know, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, any, anything that needs to be followed up on. For this current round and for future grounds. Any questions? Awesome. Well monitoring. So we are done. We've completed well mon- well monitoring for the, for the spring. Uh, it's a lot of fun to get out there and, uh, drive around the county, learn more about the county, um, figure out what a well is, how it works, how to measure it. Um, we had a total of a hundred and forty-eight well owners on file. We heard back from a monitored eighty-three of them. Um, I couldn't tell you if that's like a really good hit rate compared to previous years, but I would say the big problem was the network had just deteriorated. From it not being used for a year. So i- if we decide to grow the program and future cycles, we'll sort of start from square one and begin our outreach to build that network back up. And areas where we need more representation, that way when I do put something together data wise in the future, it's sort of clean. Um, I'm able to actually make inferences from it, where there's not a lot of holes or maybe we're pulling data from, uh, we don't have enough here. We don't have enough there. We have too much in this area. The Goldendale Park Plan, uh, continue to make good progress on the park plan. Um, we've completed the city's demographic profile. And, and since I wrote this last week, we've completed the, um, the planning area inventory. Um, we actually have a park plan meeting today at, I think it's five thirty, um, at City Hall and. We'll just be cleaning up and refining what we got and then hopefully we can do some public outreach, um, which is the next step. And there's what's called a demand and, uh, needs assessment. And, uh, I think that's coming along really nicely. After that public outreach is done, then, you know, just the monetary stuff and then. Be getting close to sending that thing into R C O. Any questions?
Yeah, hopefully you heard about the sidewalk, uh, earlier.
I need to back up just one on the Columbia Land Trust acquisition. Is it being written into the documents that that'll stay open for public?
Yes, any Columbia Land Trust acquisition, part, that's part of their, I don't know, call their charter, their mission or everything they acquire is they, they. You know, they're, they're the steward, but it may, it's, it's, it's public land. People can go on it.
But it is in.
The only difference, so when Columbia Land Trust, they usually work with the other timber companies. So when the timber company shut down, they usually shut down as well. Their properties for fire danger.
Yeah, and that's sensible.
I disagree with that. It just.
And one other thing for natural resources. So we're still working through the funding amendment currently with Swizzler. And then in regards to Dry Creek and Butler Creek, uh, we have a refined base and yield assessment contract that we're trying to do with them. Uh, the quarter one P R P R or progress report, uh, payment request is being processed. The, we hit a few snags, the draft final report was due March first. Um, and then the QAP or Quality Assurance Progress, basically it's a report. Uh, it's something that we need from the Clickitat or from the Central Clickitat County District needed to input the data collected into Ecology's database. That was due May fifteenth. The final report for this was due May fifteenth and the stakeholder report of findings was due May fifteenth. Um, right now that district is speaking with a consultant to do, um, a portion of this as far as, uh, generating the reports that they needed. Um, so this was what I was going to bring up last week, but I went ahead and if it's okay with commissioners, I went ahead and said, let's start working on this. Time extension for this. I don't think we're going to get the reports due from Lauren by, by June thirtieth. And so speaking with Ecology, they said if, if we're going to do a time extension on this, because the end of this contract is June thirtieth. It's been a project that the counties had that we've got the central, the central conservation district with, um, over there by the city, they've been doing for a few years. And so I'm like, let's just, to cover our bases, let's, let's just ask for a time extension if that's possible. They said that they, that we can do an eight or nine month time extension and they preferred it if we do do a time extension. That they would prefer to do an eight or nine month time extension on this. So there is some concern on this for task three, for instance, which, uh, with, so it's basically bust down into four tasks. Within our task three, which is a bunch of different, um, reports that they need to file and everything. We've only spent, we, we haven't spent a lot of money out of that. Under task two, we, we basically were complete with that. That's a hundred percent. But task three. The Conservation District hasn't been billing anything to that. And so I'm like, I don't know if we can do all of that by June thirtieth and have these annual reports and finishing reports done by June thirtieth. So Ecology said that was an option, but I want to bring it all, bring it up to all three of you and see what y'all thought and whether or not I should move forward with that request.
What's the end result? Why are you studying Dry Creek Butler Creek?
So this was a project I kind of fell in on. This is something that's been around for a few years. To be honest, I'm not sure. I know it's a contract we have with the Conservation District and they do all of the work. Um, but it has, yeah, I'll let him speak to it.
So, yeah, so, so the end result, right, is they're studying the construction of a reservoir on originally it was Idlewild Creek and then Dry Creek. And they found Butler Creek, uh, um, while they were doing that first assessment. And they, there are some really spotty data on the flows because when they construct a reservoir, the hope is to augment the little click a tat. Um, in the summer, right? So it's just this, uh, I want to say not final step, but sort of an intermediary. Intermediary step in data collection for Dry Creek and Butler Creek to then. Is it going to be feasible to build a reservoir on either of these two, um, on either of these two creeks?
This is essentially a Swizzler in our county.
Basically, yes, on a much smaller scale.
Much smaller scale, yeah.
And I apologize for my ignorance. And I apologize for my ignorance. I'm still trying to get caught up on everything Swizzler.
Is that relatively correct, Commissioner?
You did a good job, Keaton. So, yes, the the grant agreement that we have now that we've been working through, the reason we haven't been able to spend on part three and four is first you have to collect the data, then you have to analyze the data. After you analyze the data, you have stakeholder meetings, you have this whole process that you have to go through. We have, we we should have been working on the time extension two months ago. Knowing that we can't do the final report until we do the ba- basin yield and that's that's, you know, we have to get that done. And then the QUAP should have been, I mean, the QUAP you have to do a long time ago, in order to do the the flow monitoring in the first place, you have to have your quality assurance plan before you start that. So that should be already done. Kind of like when we do well monitoring, you're well monitoring underneath a QUAP that we probably should check and see if it needs updated. If there's been any changes, but that's how, that's how that works.
How long have they been, I mean, because I'm remembering
Twenty eighteen is.
Mister McClure sitting in here and asking this board for more money for the Conservation District for stream monitoring.
Year, it was a two-year contract that got extended. It's on its second amendment now and this would be its third amendment.
And amendments are normal in natural resources, especially when you have high flows and your stream monitoring program. It blows out and then you have to go back and now you've lost all that flow data. And you can't just go back and put it back in, because you're, what we're trying to do is refine the actual total amount of flow that's coming off of that thing. And if it blows out when you'd get, capture most of your flow, it takes a whole nother year in order to capture that.
And and this was also a project that was started like right before COVID came up and it sort of blew a hole into CKCD's plans.
So, structure-wise, are we lead? What are we on this?
We are, we are the lead because it's within our RIA.
Yeah, and 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 part of it, I'm not, I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus, but from the folks I spoke to from the Conservation District, I was told that this was gonna be done. Not to worry about it. When I assisted with quarter four for the PRPR, the Payment Request Progress Report. There's a, there, the the only holdup that we had was on the software that the Conservation District was using. Whether or not that could be reimbursed, we found that out, we got that in. Quarter three wasn't done this last year, so we just did one quarter four. We did quarter one appropriately on time. Right after that timeframe, I was told, hey, everything's gonna be done by June thirtieth, we're gonna be solid. I know that they they've been dealing with a skeleton crew at the Conservation District, that's a, that's a big piece of it. So in their defense, it's been skeleton, but they've hired a number of people in the last few weeks. I haven't, I just simply haven't been able to, me and Keaton, we've tried reaching out multiple times to the Conservation District, we just haven't been able to hear anything back in the last few weeks in regards to whether or not this can still be done by June thirtieth. They might already have it and it might just be one big reimbursement request and filing. But I'm also kind of of the mindset where it's like I kind of want to cover our bases and just ask for the time extension while we still can.
I don't see how it could be done, because part of that is is public outreach and public meetings that you haven't heard about, so that we're gonna have to get the time.
Well, the 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 public outreach section of it, correct, was task four was axed from the from the contract. Yeah, and I think it was amendment two that totally eliminated any sort of outreach or stakeholder whatever from the from the from the contract. So right now, the only thing that like the the data collection from what I've been able to garner from CKCD and from what I've found is complete, it's just that the assessment, right?
I I guess to me I I just have this funny feeling that when a few various groups of citizens hear about building a reservoir up there and flooding that area, they're probably gonna have a problem with it. So, you know, when we ax the the public ax the the public outreach part of it just.
Well, and it's also, this is just step one of of a long.
Yeah, this is an old project, I get it.
And it's been through an alternatives analysis. I mean, we we actually went up upstream, because we actually were looking at a reservoir down on Spring Creek a little long ago. The problem was is we could capture the water. You just wouldn't be able to use it anywhere upstream for any beneficial uses, whether it's the city or anything else. And that's why we started looking up higher in the this the system. So that you could get the stream flow benefit all the way through the system during the the summer months. And it was part of
How big a reservoir are we talking about? How big a reservoir are we talking about?
It's, I mean, it's nothing like, you know, the
It ain't Swizzler, but.
It ain't Swizzler, but it's
You wanna say twelve thousand? Does that sound right?
Acre feet.
Acre feet.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Swizzler Canyon.
And that's if, I think if you use Butler Dry Creek is is about half the size Idlewild, there just wasn't the the flow. So we've we've done the alternatives analysis and it was a they do a an overview desktop exercise to to see how much water they thinks in the system based on snowfall. But with this volcanic rock up here, a lot of that water goes subsurface. And so then we had to make sure, because you're not gonna build a a reservoir if half that water goes under the ground. And it was all part of, we were, you know, it was one hundred percent grant funded. It was all part of the Columbia River dollars because it's, so a third of that water would be used for the fish in in the stream. It would rewater this whole area that goes dry in the summer. It would have a lot of ecological benefits for fishing.
And after speaking to the Department of Ecology, there's in any amendment in the future, you know, that that we couldn't e- expand the scope even if they wanted to, right? Because the sort of the funding for that, for this program is sort of what they, they insinuated that that it was sort of gone, right? So we're working with what we got. So it would, we don't bill to it anyway. It's just the con- we reimburse the Conservation District and the funding is sort of already there.
So if we extend six to eight months, do you have the bandwidth to pick up on where Conservation District is lost and can't keep going with this?
So what I was gonna say is they do the work. We have a contract with them, they need to do the work. I would argue that we're not hydrologists or engineers such as Lauren. He has the expertise. They're the company. To, or they're the entity, I should say, that that does the work. We have a contract with them. They need to be providing this as they proceed with the work.
And that's what I'm asking. Where do you think we're at if we go ahead and authorize extension of the finances? Will the reports get done?
Yeah, I think the reports will get done. And we're not, you know, just so the public is tracking on this. It's not like they're working and the county's paying them. The Conservation District pays their own folks. And then they ask us for reimbursement of that. And then we ask Ecology and Ecology just gives it straight to them. So it's not even really a pass through. To us, we just verify the invoices that they're appropriate. And just pass it through, just pass it through, so.
Yeah, we're the financial responsible person, yeah.
And that, and that's why I wanted to ask is because ultimately as the lead in entity for the county. It's, I wanted to make sure I got y'all's bus.
I'm trying to do a calculator to take, because I I came up with an Olympic-sized swimming pool is essentially right at five hundred thousand gallons. And twelve hundred acre feet is three nine one zero two one seven one four zero gallons. So I was trying to do the math on how many Olympic-sized swimming pools that is, but my calculator doesn't take that many numbers. So, I I don't know the answer to that question, yep. I'm trying to figure out the size of the reservoir, since it hasn't been really talked about in.
It has, I mean, it was discussed. We have an alternatives analysis, I believe, from Aspect Consulting from back then. We will make sure staff can get you.
Right, I'm just saying it hasn't been talked about it here. Because I'm unaware of the actual size, footprint, maps. There's never.
And and the reaches of where this reservoir is, it's sort of up near Saida Pass. It would be a substantial increase in in available water for the county if it were able to go through.
Well, what answers some of those questions for me are Ecology and WDFW being involved in the beginning process to decide if this is even viable. And then everybody else move.
Ecology was involved all the way through this. When we started our alternatives analysis, a lot of this. So we were looking, you know, there's a lot of pieces to this. At one point, you know, we we seen what's happened in Yakima County, where if you want to drill a well, you need a water right. Well, there's not a lot of water rights available. So what this would also be able to do is create a water right that you could use in the future as mitigation if if the law changes. Or if they want with the Hearst decision to make changes, so that otherwise we wouldn't be able to drill new wells anywhere in here. So this is one of those options is mitigation. Looking forward, it could have benefits on the the industrial side, the commercial side, the the municipal side. There's a lot of potential benefits. And then as we were looking at it also with the changing environment, with more rainfall and less snowpack, this would help to mitigate that. Because you'd be able to hold back that water. Which would help the little Clickitat in the summertime.
But this is another, essentially if I, you know, if I'm not reaching, because in three years, we've never had a full-blown sit-down discussion, blueprints, maps, anything else. This is another, the county's not building a dam. Ecology's doing research to try to see if some outside organization will build a dam to create a reservoir.
This could, the whoever does that builds it would likely be using state dollars. Whether the county's the lead on it or another agency is the lead on it, there would be, it would be different than Swizzler. Swizzler is specifically for, you know, it was at the time wine grapes and and adding capacity to the system. This adds a lot of different possibilities for benefits that, again, all of that is in reports that has been done since twenty fourteen. You know, and in the discussions in the last three years have just been on this singular grant program. That is just one piece of that larger, but I'm sure staff will get you all the reports that you can read.
So in saving water over time behind the reservoir, have they decided what they need, like their maximum TMDLs to be going downstream during that time?
Uh, another reason we were looking at this is because it would reduce water temperatures and help the TMDLs. It would also help the city, because then with the cities, you know, their outflow from their sewer treatment plant. So there's, you know, it's a multi-benefit all the way across the spectrum is why we continue. And why, that's why the Department of Ecology was willing to invest so much money into this all this time, is because of the multi-benefits.
I'd like to give kudos to Keaton for being able to dive into this.
You've caught up very quickly.
Gone into natural resources.
And if you would be able to send that report to all three.
Well, I I personally would like a a full-blown sit down and talk about it in this room transparently, so all those people know what we're talking about. Especially since I don't even ne- technically know what we're talking about, because it really hasn't been talked about in this.
He can come up with something.
Do a presentation.
I'm writing it down right now.
I could have bad math, but I just figured it out. Seven thousand eight hundred and twenty Olympic-sized swimming pools. So not a small reservoir. Seven thousand eight hundred and twenty Olympic-sized swimming pools.
That would depend on your perspective in terms of what reservoir sizes are.
It's very. Saying the gallons of water relation.
And you also have to consider the
Alright, so we'll move into economics.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, okay, for the Clickitat Mill Site, we went out for RFP last week. And we've already had a lot of inquiries, firms contacting us for more information. That's positive. And we're accepting them through June fifth. And so.
RFP for?
The IPG grant, or for the Integrated Planning Grant. And last week, we met with Mary, who is the Technical Advisor from the Department of Ecology down at the site to go over everything and let her take a look at it. She's very excited for the project. Columbia Gorge Regional Airport, we have submitted the CDS request to Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, and Representative Newhouse's offices. If we were to get funded, these would be used just for in the infrastructure portion. We also applied for and were awarded the Industrial Site Readiness Grant through the Department of Commerce for two hundred and fifty thousand to be used for the engineering and design work for the infrastructure portion of the airport. So far, we're on track to utilize eighty to ninety percent of the grant by June thirtieth, which is the deadline to use that. And Public Works has the contract that was approved on the consent agenda, consent agenda today. Additionally, we have another US EDA project manager, which is our third or fourth one of that project. We have a funding opportunity for the federal disaster relief option through the US EDA. We're currently trying to set up a meeting and just do some research on what that would look like for applying. The regional innovation hub, this was the ICAP or Innovation Cluster Accelerator Program through the Department of Commerce that was awarded to Maked and GTA. And that funding through Washington ends this month, but Maked applied for the impl- implementation phase. Funding from Business Oregon, our Department of Commerce's counterpart in Oregon. And they were funded, so the project will continue. The goal for the cluster is to give our aerospace sector more opportunities for supply chain export and workforce retention. Affordable housing, we put a public notice out last week to solicit applications for the Affordable Housing Advisory Board for the document filing fees. And we are on track to have the first meeting with the new board in mid-July.
Who picks that board, by the way? Who's in charge of, if if there's too many applicants that apply, who gets to pick who sits on it?
Well, there's five spots open and and four of them are designated to specific entities. So ones for the Columbia Cascade Housing, ones from Wa Gap. And one's the Public Health Director and one from our department with one citizen-at-large, and I believe you guys choose the citizen-at-large.
I I had a somebody question wanting to put in an application, and it's not something that I believe has ever came before this board before, so.
Yeah, so yeah, if you guys know of anybody, encourage them to apply. I don't think a board has been selected since two thousand fifteen.
Not since twenty fifteen.
It was, it was Mister Rhodes, by the way, so if he hasn't turned in an application, you know who it was.
Uh, for business retention and expansion, we have one new licensed childcare provider that can currently take six children and the Clickitat County, or sorry, Columbia Gorge childcare committee assisted them with their fence building. So that's really exciting that we have a new provider. And we also have an an auto mechanic and he's looking to purchase the building and move his business into the building. The childcare committee, they're still continuing to do a community reach out with local businesses via the chambers of commerce, so they're continuing to do that. Broadband, we're still just following the broadband office monthly updates with the Department of Commerce and working with Maked and the local ISPs to formulate a deployment plan. And we have really good news. Click Networks was recently awarded an eight hundred thousand dollar loan grant combination from the Department of Commerce's Public Works Board for broadband infrastructure. And this is gonna produce fifteen miles of fiber to expand service availability to almost four hundred end users in the Trout Lake area. So very good news for that area. And on the fifteenth, we hosted the Clickitat County Job Fair at the high school. We had nine Clickitat County businesses and are pretty good turnout as far as students go. And then last week, we also represented the county at the WorkSource Job Fair at the library, and that was well attended.
And then also we had the the Roosevelt landfill tour this last week. Part of that landfill tour was just to kind of get the department up to date on the importance of landfill and and how that plays into the county and stuff. We had a business recruitment opportunity also attend, which was the driving factor behind this.
Hey, you missed out. I gave it a couple of weeks. They're having bouncy houses and all sorts of things out there.
Yeah, so they, so speaking, the, it was actually pretty fruitful. I wasn't sure what to expect. But as the, I mean, it turned into a three-hour tour and which is, I'd say a good hour of that was the business recruitment opportunity, talking very technical language with with Art Mainz. Specifically on on kind of everything, all their operations out there. Basically, the Basically, the the recruitment opportunity, it's, they would look to recycle. Uh, plastics and tires and turn that into oil and stuff. They're looking at like twenty acres. Um, which is a very small footprint compared to the. Hundreds of acres, I'm sure they got out there. Um, so it'd be a small piece of it. Um, and the, the, the business likes it, um, it's a, it's a new technology. They're, they're starting to build one in Texas. They've been permitted one into California, so they feel like if they've been permitted in California, they can be permitted in Washington. Um, so the idea for them is just to talk to Republic because ultimately. Is it's gonna have to go through Republic's board on whether or not they want to add this. I do know that they're looking at recycling. And so it kind of brings up some other ideas from a business recruitment standpoint if people are looking. I know that there's issues with turbines and solar panels and stuff. What that would look like if that were to come into the county over at the Roosevelt landfill. And so, because I'm, I'm familiar with just recently, thank you Commissioner Anderson, sent me a link. Uh, Governor Isley had stated that, you know, fifty four hundred acres of solar is going to be going in at Horse Heaven Hills. Uh, speaking with, uh, some folks down there, I think it's in Sherman County, they got eight thousand acres that is going to be going green and renewable energy. So when it comes to recycling these things, I know that there's some, there's a business case there where that's located. I know that they've got. A the exact same spot in Arlington, Oregon, that's right across the river, so it's kind of a. What, what would that look like? So those are some of the ideas that kind of go through my mind as I'm going through the Roosevelt landfills.
So this business entity that wants to open up, are they looking to build something outside the footprint? Of the Roosevelt landfill, or they're trying to build it inside the footprint of the landfill? And kind of joint partner with the landfill to recycle plastics, but you're talking about green energy projects, so. What are we recycling? Or what are they trying to do?
So they, so they do all plastics. So what's very interesting is once it gets to Republic, once it gets to landfill. There is no more sorting out. All the sorting out is done at all the different transfer stations. Republic, the owner, just for the public to know, owns four hundred landfills in the nation. Two hundred of them are active and of that were, the Roosevelt landfill is in any metric you want to. Measure the landfill, it's in the top ten in the nation. So Arlington across river is basically the exact same thing we have. So, uh, what they're looking at, it was, it would be within the footprint. They would charge tipping fees, so they would be charging Republic some amount of tipping fees. Um, in order to do that, they would make a product which would be sweet oil is is basically what they call it, very high grade oil. And then they would try and sell that to various, you know, out on the consumer market for green energy. Um, I think Republic is open to this in the past. They've had, we've taken, for instance, ash. That they incinerated in Spokane and there's other companies that have come in and started to mine that trash for various metals. If that makes sense, so I.
Right, but my question is, is.
But it would be within the footprint, so there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be.
Next question is, is this company bringing in? Thinking about bringing in debris, let's call it plastics from Portland. That actually go into our landfill? Or are they actually thinking about collecting plastics? From the state of Washington and making oil out of them and shipping the oil out. In other words, that tied laundry detergent bottle will not be going into our landfill anymore. Because if that's the case, we need to look at a further drop in landfill revenues because we'll have less tonnage in our landfill, not that. Throwing away garbage is, or recycling is good, but we need to know what the plan is so we can budget accordingly.
So I think, I think what they were looking at it from a business perspective as they spoke was that they would be utilizing the same rail lines. And the same vehicles and everything, and then whatever gets, whatever Republic, so it it would be the same tipping. So I, I, yeah, so it'd be within there, but they wouldn't be, whatever the tipping fee is, it'd be coming in on the same rail cars. Because they, they, they did talk about the rail capacity, whether or not that would have to be expanded. But I do know that Republic itself, they, they have issues with tires, specifically tires. And we saw the tires out there, the, the, the tires, because they're rubber and they're light, they tend to float up. And so even though you put layers on them, they, they still float up to the top and there's a few tires that were just out. It looks like there's just a random tire out there on the ground, well, that just, that floated up, goes through the dirt and everything, it just sits right up on top. And so they don't like tires going into the landfill, so there might be. You know, that might be something for a Republic question is where if, if there's going to be additional sorting capacity. At the landfill, if they decide to move forward with this company.
Well, they don't always sort those plastics at the landfill, they sort them up in Seattle, but that was kind of my question.
Yeah, if there's like.
Is it, is it taking tonnage? Current tonnage out of the landfill and diverting it somewhere else. So if we are removing a hundred thousand tons from the landfill. We are reducing a hundred thousand tons worth of tipping fees too, at four dollars a ton. Um, so.
I'm gonna write down that question, I'll ask.
I, I can ask out a sideline too, so, I mean, and this project is a ways away, so. But it's just one of those, as it gets closer, we need to be aware of. The potential implications through the landfill revenue source.
If, and just for a timeframe perspective, if this were a quote unquote, you know, successful business recruitment opportunity. We're looking at ten, fifteen years.
Something we need to be aware of, not anything we need to be on today.
And then, uh, lastly, for Casey Peta. Uh, in regards to the sales and use tax for the housing, um, our plans to solidify this application with the three mayors. Have each city review it, approve it, and then have an executive committee meeting sometime early July. And then basically present that application for the executive committee, which includes all three county commissioners. It's a public, open public meeting. As well as all three city mayors to approve that, to approve that application. We're still in the very early, early processes of it. And, and knowing some of the concerns from our mayors that want a big hefty one and big hefty application and we prefer. Uh, the simple application, there might be a lot of, a lot of work to be done. So what we're beginning that process and then trying to present that. The final application for the next, uh, K C P to meeting. So, for adoption. Um, and then outside of that, I think that's about it.
Uh, we just signed a agreement for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars today and they have one month to spend it. How much of that are they going to be able to get done?
Eighty to ninety percent. So, yeah, so I've been very concerned about this. It's within the. Uh, wi- within that grant specifically says in the wording for that contract. That some of it can be spent after June thirtieth, but in the grant application, June thirtieth was, was a hard deadline. So I'm still got my hopes up that we can completely finish it out. Now, the tasks themselves are not time based, they're product based. And so even though we executed the contract with the consultant last week. Understanding that after the R F P and everything, it's going to be task based, so their task is going to be completed within that. By the, the, the deliverables for that reimbursement. So I can't, I don't think, just for the commissioners to be aware, because I'm going to ask again here as June thirtieth comes around. And I'm going to beseech Commerce and say, hey, we'd like to use the full hundred percent on that grant. Is there any way you could do a time extension, just three months? And we could, we could finish this out, the entire engineering design portion of the Columbia Gorge Regional Airports. Phase two of the aviation business park, we can get that entire infrastructure done if they just give us. Even the ten percent, even the twenty five thousand dollars I think is important, thirty thousand, I think is important, we try and capture that within the grant. But.
Do what you can.
So when are you hoping to start having those conversations with them? Hopefully before the end of June.
Uh, well, now that I think about it, we're getting into June, so here in the next week or two. So I have been talking, so the grant manager for that Serena, and I do talk to Serena a couple of times a week. So, because she's also worried that we pass this grant, they're the, the consent agenda today, so. But yes, this is like the number one thing on my radar, this piece of the grant is the nearest gator to the boat. So both me and Serena were freaking out about it, if, if that makes you all feel better, so it's, it'll be done. Anything else? Good. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks guys. Do we have? Is in person or online?
There was some construction late last week on the grade coming up. And that messed up one of my meetings and that person was late, so. She was going to be here, yeah, I bet she got stuck in the construction, I didn't even think about letting her know. Um, we can do, uh, there she is. Perfect. Good morning. Come on up front, how are you? And I thought about it, there was construction on the grade last week, I didn't know if they still had it this week.
The sign's up, but nothing.
Oh, that was lucky. I had to wait quite a while last week, I was panicking. When it's unexpected. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Zoller, we've switched seats here.
Would you like to? Yes, go ahead, Val.
It's always a delight to, uh, come and, and speak with you all. Um, we are, uh, endeavoring to keep, uh, you and all those listening in, um. Fully informed on the workings of the Columbia River Gorge Commission, uh, especially as it applies to the best county of all, Clickitac. Um, no bias here whatsoever. Um, but Christina and I thought today, Executive Director of the, for those of you listening in who don't know Christina Wolonowski. Woli Anowski, did I get that close?
Close.
I need to see it to, to get it right. Um, of the Columbia River Gorge Commission and we thought we'd give you a briefing today on. The, uh, activities we've got going, um, particularly as they relate to, uh, transparency for the, um. Uh, landowners of Clickitac County through our database management process. And also, uh, near and dear to all of our hearts, our climate change initiatives. So with your, um, forbearance, I will ask Christina to, um, give you, uh, the, the details of where we stand with. With a couple of terrific staff, um, initiatives.
Thank you, Commissioner Powler. Uh, for the record, Christina Volniakovsky. And I'm the Executive Director for the Columbia River Gorge Commission. And, uh, just completed nine years at the helm of the, the commission, which is. I think I'm the longest serving Executive Director, uh, so far in the thirty five year history. Uh, but I feel very strongly that we've built a pretty good staff at the commission. That has enabled us to do a lot more work than we were actually able to do in the past and a lot more collaborative. Uh, partnerships with all of our partners throughout the, the gorge. So I just wanted to emphasize a couple of things, uh, that might be of interest to you. That, uh, first of all, we have, um. A couple of new staff that have joined us. So we started out, when I started at the Gorge Commission in two thousand and fifteen. We had had only six staff total with the Executive Director for probably six or seven years. And, uh, due to budget cuts in both Oregon and Washington. And so, as you remember, we were pretty backlogged on a lot of the Clicktech County work that we were doing. Because we just didn't have staff capacity. But thanks to the support of Clicktech County and also through the Office of Financial Management. We were able to get a dedicated Clicktech County Planner on our staff to help address all of the. Uh, backlog. And so I'm very happy to report today that we have no backlog. And, uh, it's been, uh, we're actually just getting in enough applications that keeps a full time planner. Uh, moving with all the applications, but not so overwhelmed that we're behind.
Had my mic up. Do you know how many applications? You guys get for Clickitac County within a given month or a given year?
Within a given year, right now, we're probably at fifteen.
So fifteen applications a year through the Gorge Commission for projects that take place within the Gorge Commission?
Yes, and, uh, we get a lot of pre-applications. So before an application becomes, uh, a full application, they have to submit a lot of information to us. And so, and, and that'll be the second update that I have for you about how that's moving forward. But, uh, in the pre-application phase, uh, oftentimes, it's not our holdup. It's usually that the, we do a lot of consultation with the landowners and then they have to submit. Uh, the information that we need to deem the application complete. And then we do a public notice and then, of course, we go through the process of reviewing whether we can approve it or not. And, uh, it's been interesting because at some points, we have to put a pause on the review timeline. Because we're waiting for a survey, an archaeological survey or, you know, rare plant survey. And I'm sure you're all aware of that, but I wanted to say that for the most part, we have had no delays recently. We've gotten, um, whatever pre-applications were in the queue, people have been able to give us the information that we need. Uh, the Forest Service has hired an additional cultural resource specialist. So that we're able to get the cultural resource surveys done in a more timely way than we have in the past. And, uh, and, you know, thanks to support from the Washington Legislature. Uh, we've been able to fully fund the Clicktech County Planner to, uh, be there. And now we have a couple of, another new planner that joined our commission staff. And, uh, so we're able to, uh, even do more in Clicktech County. Because we're using that as an opportunity to also train the new planner on how to actually do these development reviews. And so then they can be more, uh, helpful to the other county planners as we move forward. So, you know, we do oversight of the others five counties and, um. And so by having our planners actually go through the process, just like the county planners do in the other counties. You know, we're able to look at what are the issues that arise, what are things that we need to be thinking about in terms of improvement of our policies? And so on and so forth. And then tomorrow, we're going to have a planning directors meeting at the Gorge Commission. For all of the six counties. And, uh, we want to welcome, uh, Scott Edelman, who's, uh, here new as your pl- um, planning director. And so, and have him meet the rest of the county planning directors and then see where, you know, where we can help support whatever work he's. He's, uh, involved with. So that's the, what's going on with the Clickitac County planning.
If I, if I could jump in for just a second, Christina, in terms of explaining the process at the last Gorge Commission meeting, Bryce Gu- Guzki.
Guski.
Guski. I need to practice these last names, sorry. Bryce, um, gave an overview of the, of the process he goes through with the Clickitac County. So that all of the, those who are interested and who are part of the, um, Zoom, Zoom meeting, um, could. Could, uh, follow along and understand what each stage entails and what part the Gorge Commission owns, if you will. And what part needs to be, uh, seconded, if you will, to experts such as the Underworld Conservation District helps, um, uh, in Clickitac County as well.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions about our planning process or permits? Nope. Okay, well, I'm just really happy to report that everything's good and, you know, we're not having any, any backlog issues anymore. So we have just enough coming in to keep us busy, but not overwhelmed and backlogged. Uh, so the other improvement that we're trying to make at the Gorge Commission. Is that, uh, we're in the process of updating our entire database system. Uh, we're going from a very archaic, uh, system of the access database replacement project or access database. And we're replacing that project and we've, we're in our third year of that and we're in implementation. What that means for the average citizen is who is interested in applying for a permit is that. Hopefully it will be streamlined and it will be online so that, uh. We will have much more information on our website and then a, an online permitting system. So that if they can, you know, fill in all the boxes and get that information to us online. Then, you know, we're able to, uh, get all that information. It will show where there's missing information. And so hopefully it'll be a lot more user friendly and, uh. Perhaps more straightforward than just the manual process we go through now. And then in addition to that, then the whole application process, once it gets approved. It will populate a whole database that will make it a lot easier for any. it will populate a whole database that will make it a lot easier for anyone, whether it's the landowner or other agencies or the public, to see what, what kinds of development there are in, in the National Scenic Area. And people can do a much more thorough query about development in the National Scenic Area.
Part of that will be mapping, right?
Yes, I was just going to get to the GIS. Thank you. And so part of that is the mapping, and that we're upgrading our GIS system to be compatible with the database so that hopefully with just a few clicks, a landowner could find out like where, which land use designation they're in, what's actually permitted there. Right now, they have to go through the management plan, which of course is like 500 pages, and not that user-friendly, and so we're hoping to change all that with this new technology that we're implementing. So, and we're hoping that it will be done by the end of, well, June of 2025, so another year and a half or so. And then, and then there'll be, you know, a sure process of trying to get people trained on how to use it. So we'll have a lot of outreach workshops and everything. So that's in terms of the planning side of what we're doing. The other good news is that we were successful in having Oregon match Washington's funding for a climate change implementation program. I think the last time we talked to you, we had let you know that we had done a climate change action plan that involved a lot of collaboration and input from partners all through the gorge, agencies, scientific experts, as well as tribes and the public. And, but we had no funding to be able to actually implement any of the actions that people thought that we should be doing ourselves or in partnership with others. So finally, just two months ago, the, the Oregon Legislature matched the Washington funding that was already approved. And so we're able to move forward with that. And we're now developing the actual budget and implementation plan for, for that program. So the next time we meet with you, we'll be able to give you some concrete examples of where we're going to be making progress with that climate change implementation. And then finally, we have also received a little bit of extra money for doing implementation of our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, which was also approved by the Commission last year. And that includes a lot more outreach and translation of materials, communications to the public about what it is that we do, and having it be more relevant for, to a broader audience of residents here that may not necessarily be a landowner, but that care about the National Scenic Area. And Commissioner Fowler is on our communications team, and we have a subcommittee specifically on communications, and they'll be very instrumental in helping us figure out exactly what kinds of information does the public care about in the National Scenic Area, and how can we do a better job of communicating what we do? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm excited to, on the communications part, because one of the things in any organization is how do you get the word out in a way that resonates with your intended audience? So that's something we're working on to, to make us a less mysterious organization to many in the gorge area. But before we close with our remarks, I'd just like to, to say a quick tribute to my predecessor, Sandra Clark, who served for nine years, I think it was, on the, the Gorge Commission, both as a gubernatorial appointment and as a Click Attack County appointment. And since we last saw you sitting here together, we unfortunately had Sandra, and then, then her husband Dennis pass away. And I'd just like to, they were both true heroes of the gorge and beyond. They, they made a very profound difference in the area in which we live and recreate. So I'd just like to, to salute both Sandra and Dennis for their service to Click Attack County. They will be missed as individuals and as leaders. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. And I know that's hard for you too. Sandra was very special to, to a lot of people.
Yes, Madam Chair, she was very special, and, you know, we were, we were not only work colleagues, but spent a lot of time outside of work, so, yeah.
Interesting relationship. Of office at sides of the fences, but you made good friendship, which was.
Yeah, well, she was a powerful, funny, and amazing woman and leader, and certainly gave the Commission a lot of different kinds of perspectives that I think were very important for the commissioners to hear.
Had no trouble speaking up.
Absolutely none.
I endeavored to do the same, following.
I think you're going to be fine, and I think you're on the right committee for communications, knowing you. I do have a question if we could back up.
Yes.
The downturn in applications. Do you see that as economy-driven like everybody else, or possibly are we kind of getting to that end of buildable lands? Where are we with what's happening? Why is it slowing down?
Well, that's an interesting question, Madam Chair. I don't really see it slowing down. It's just that we're catching up.
We're catching up, okay.
And we've averaged anywhere from 14 to 20 applications a year that we've been reviewing and that I've been, actually, so far, everything's been approved. Sometimes it's, you know, back and forth for quite a while to try to get to yes, but so far, I have not had to deny one for quite a long time. But, but a lot of that is because we want to make sure to do all of our due diligence. And one thing that's interesting is that regardless of whether we have, you know, 15 at once that we need to be looking at, or one at a time, you know, one coming in each month, each one is very specific and it takes a very, it, it just takes time to get through all the analysis that's needed so that by the time a decision is made, it's really appeal-proof. That's what we're really going for, because sometimes putting more time upfront with the landowner and making sure that we can check all the boxes, if you will, according to the management plan, it really helps. I know sometimes it's frustrating that it takes six months to get through a permit process, as Commissioner Fowler knows.
Two years.
Sometimes it takes a little longer. But I think part of it is that we want to make sure that when, you know, I sign that permit and it goes out to the public, that there's no repercussions for that. And we, we try to be as timely as we can with those permits, but sometimes it just takes a little longer. But, you know, 15 at, you know, in the queue at various stages is very doable for us. And I think that's just been the trend, and in the other counties as well.
Sounds great.
Speaking about permitting, the Hood River Bridge. And what permits, I mean, it lands in, within the city bounds in Oregon, and it lands within the city bounds in Washington. Will there need to be a Gorge Commission permit? And is that because it's over the river in between the cities? And if so, what is your timeframe that you expect that to take? Because we hope to be in the water in October. And if we lose that in-water work window, we, the escalation cost alone is $20 million. And what can we do ahead of time to make sure that that permit is ready? So that the, the staff are going to be able to review that, because I would hate to have the red tape cost the residents of the gorge $20 million just in escalation.
Commissioner Anderson, I feel that. And, and the Gorge Commission and Hood River County have entered into an intergovernmental agreement just to make sure that the process is going to go as smoothly as possible. We're really aware, we, all of us are really aware of how important it is to get that bridge built as soon as possible. Right now, with the way that the I, the intergovernmental agreement, or MOU, if you will, is structured, is that Hood River County will be the one that is the permitting entity. So they're the ones who are going to be going through all the steps to determine whether the, the bridge will meet the criteria, which is visually unobtrusive. And so in order to expedite and make that process be very viable and be helpful to the bridge authority, one of the suggestions I made a while ago last year was to actually have a bridge aesthetics committee that is working very hard to try to make sure that all the elements of the bridge design are going to meet that standard. So the, as you had mentioned, that the ends of the bridges are in the urban areas, and they're not part of our jurisdiction, but the actual bridge itself goes over the Columbia River, which is considered general management area. But really, the standard there is the visual unobtrusiveness. Now, that's really hard to imagine how you reach that standard for a concrete bridge that's going to be over the river. But there are different elements that they can put into the design that will help make it be a very functional, a very environmentally safe bridge while also protecting public safety and some aesthetic elements. So I think the aesthetics committee is doing it as best as it can. I listened in on some of the meetings, and hopefully all those elements will be part of the final application process. I believe that the aesthetics committee will finish its work in, I think, July or August of this year with their final recommendations. That then goes to the project management team to include in the permit application. And so the way it works is then Hood River County will be looking at the permit application as it's submitted. And there will be, I'm sure, you know, public notice and opportunities for public comment. And then the permit process will move forward as, as quickly as it possibly can. Because I know that there's a lot of money at stake with making sure that this bridge gets built by 2029, and it takes several years to do this. The reason the Gorge Commission entered into this memorandum of agreement with Hood River County is that should there be any problems at all with the, with the bridge permit, if it's approved, let's say, and somebody wants to appeal it, it would then be appealed to the Gorge Commission. And we felt that that was a much better model for how to do it because for Hood River County to only permit half the bridge and Gorge Commission permit half the bridge didn't make any sense. And there are many examples of where you have a by-state infrastructure project where one state defers to the other with an opportunity for comment. So the Gorge Commission will be engaged as much as we can within our, within our limits. But the idea was to make sure that, you know, Hood River County would be going through and being the lead on making sure that this moves forward.
So, if I could chime in for just a second, more of an answer to your question as well. Both Hood River County and the Gorge Commission have very similar, near, near identical standards. And so it's not a differentiation of like, if it meets A and doesn't meet B, for example. But given your leadership role on that, on the new bridge, you'll be happy to know that it was actually the Gorge Commission that came up with the initiative to expedite by going directly to Hood River County initially, and having the Gorge Commission be the appeal body, if you will, down the line if needed, rather than doing a dual side-by-side permitting approval. So completely consistent with your concern about timing, this was an initiative by the Executive Director and her legal counsel that was dynamically debated at our April Gorge Commission meeting. And the majority of the commissioners applauded this approach, myself included.
So I just wanted to be, you know, from, we're, we're having Hood River County permit something that's in Washington State, and your legal counsel is completely fine, because I read the comments that, that some of the groups had put in on it saying that the Gorge Commission should be doing it the entire way. And so you, you guys feel confident that that's not going to create the appealable action in the future that could hang, hang us?
Well, we can never guarantee that there won't be an appeal, but our legal counsel and Hood River County's legal counsel, myself and Eric Walker, the director, we spent a lot of time crafting the, the IGA, and we feel perfectly confident that this will move forward smoothly. And we wouldn't have done it if there weren't many, many other examples out there allowing for that. And I understand, you know, that people are worried about, you know, how, how can an Oregon entity, you know, permit something in, over Washington waters? But it's one bridge, and the Gorge Commission and Hood River County's ordinance, you know, have the same standards. So, you know, their ordinance and our management plan, and also the ordinance for Click Tech County are essentially identical. So there shouldn't be any inconsistency with the approach.
Is there anything that this board can do to add to that leverage to, that, you know, clearly helps delineate that we're fine with Hood River County managing that process that would, that would, that would give more validity to that over Washington waters?
That might be something for the Communications Committee to think about and get back with you on an answer. I mean, because it very well may be either in your role as a commissioner or in your role in the bridge side of things, a statement at some point in the, down the line, affirming the support for this course of action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, just anything we can do to make sure that, because I know that there was a lot of comments from the sides that said, you know, it should be you guys doing the whole thing, not Hood River. And so anything that, you know, from my perspective, that we can lend, would add weight to your decision to allow that would, I would hope, hope to get this board's support behind.
Thank you for that question, and one other point I could add is another factor in the decision. Besides wanting to have the Gorge Commission be the appeal body, is that if the Gorge Commission actually did the permitting, then if there were any appeals, it would have to go to court. And, you know, that just didn't seem to be consistent with our approach.
Okay.
Thank you for your questions.
Mr. Christopher, do you have any questions? Any other questions?
I look forward to you guys all working together and working with Scott.
I look forward to meeting him, hopefully very soon, yes. Comes with great experience too. Terrific, terrific representative for Click Attack. Thank you.
Just a great personality too. He's very helpful.
The Gorge Commission has worked with Scott in the past, and so we're familiar with his quality of work, and we are very happy to hear that he was hired here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time today.
Good to see you, Val.
Good to see you all. Thanks for setting this up, Alisa.
So we have our Board of Adjustment applicant interview. Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. So again, thanks for having me today. But before we get started with the interview, I would like to read a statement I prepared, and I would like to do so without any interruptions as well. First, I would like to thank the board for affording me this time to interview for the Board of Adjustment vacancy. I'd also like to give a little background on who I am. As you have seen in my resume, I'm a military veteran, hold a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering, and I work as a project manager for the Army Corps of Engineers. And I'm involved in the Goldendale community. Recently, I accomplished taking over the youth soccer program for the Central Click Attack County Parks and Recreation District as their youth soccer coordinator, which is a volunteer position, and have been regularly attending all their board meetings. Going into this role, I did a lot of homework search research into possible grants to create a better soccer field, as well as any other grants that can help the program. During my research, I discovered a grant that could help fund a new soccer field and ancillary equipment in which we would only need to come up with a 10% match of the grant amount. I took the time to figure out who our RCO Regional Program Manager was, and later contacted him after getting approval from the Parks and Rec Board to get more information. Because of my intent to establish a public soccer field, Lori from the pool set up a meeting with the Mayor of Goldendale, Dave Jones, and the County Economic Planner, Keaton Curtis, and Richard Foster, for me to give, to brief them on my ideas. After this meeting, I was then invited to be a part of the City of Goldendale on their Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan Working Group by the mayor. I have since been to two meetings with this community and have another one scheduled for this evening. I bring this up as to illustrate who I am and that I like getting involved in a community to assist in making it better. Before taking anything on in life, I do my homework search research so that I am well-versed in what is expected of me. This also shows that others in the community value my assistance and expertise. I'd like to start with the timeline of events. April 1st, Commissioner Christopher posts vacancy announcement on everything Goldendale site under his County Commissioner Facebook account. I comment, asking for deadline for application to be turned in. Commissioner Christopher responds that he would like to fill this vacant. Commissioner Christopher responds that he would like to fill this vacancy in the next two to four weeks. April 2nd, I hand deliver my application to the commissioner's office. The week of May 6th, I was informed in passing that they were trying to get this board to make a decision on a Board of Adjustment vacancy position. Upon hearing this, I was a little surprised as it had been longer than the four weeks that Commissioner Christopher had previously informed me of. Having not officially seen any announcement of this position other than the Everything Goldendale Facebook page, I'd assumed Commissioner Christopher jumped the gun and there was actually no position to be filled. May 10th, I contacted the county commissioner's office to determine if my application was on file and what the current status was. I was informed they were trying to get it on the commissioner's agenda for them to discuss and that it possibly would be at the next commissioner's meeting. May 14th, I called in to listen to the board meeting while away for work in Minneapolis, Minnesota. At two hours and five minutes into the commissioner's meeting, the topic of vacant Board of Adjustment position finally came up for discussion. Commissioner Zoller asked Commissioner Christopher if he has had the time to look over my application, in which he states, I've looked over it briefly. At this point, Commissioner Christopher has had my application for six weeks. I'd like to point out that on the Facebook page, he stated he wanted to fill it within two to four weeks. About a minute after making this statement, Commissioner Christopher then states that he looked at my application when he first got it, but has not done so since. Towards the end of this topic discussion, Commissioner Zoller asked Commissioner Christopher if he still wants to look around for other applicants. Commissioner Christopher's response to this, yeah, let's throw it out there and I'll put a few feelers out to the general public and let them throw it around. I'm very curious where you put those feelers at because I looked all over the Facebook public pages for our area as well as the county website and the newspaper. I did not see any public outreach for getting additional applications. My question is, where slash who did you reach out to to get applications from Commissioner Christopher? After listening into the Zoom call and having heard that my application has been on file for six weeks, only to be briefly skimmed over, I once again contacted the commissioner's office voicing my frustration and that if this board cannot come to a decision on this soon, then to go ahead and pull my application. I was informed that it would be discussed again at the next scheduled commissioner's meeting. I informed the commissioner's office that I would hold out to see what comes about the May 21st meeting. On May 22nd, due to war conflict, I was not able to make the Zoom call. So I contacted the commissioner's office to get an update, only to find out they wanted to schedule an interview. Later in my hotel room, when I finally had the time, I sat through and listened to the recorded commissioner's meeting. Commissioner Christopher states the following regarding the vacant Board of Adjustment position. I have not had any time to find applicants. Interestingly enough, at the last meeting, he stated he would put some feelers out there for more applications. After this statement, he then states regarding my application, I know nothing about the individual nor where he stands on any pertinent issues. Towards the end of this discussion, the board finally determines to put a deadline in place for any other applicants as well as to schedule an interview for applicants at the next board meeting. Now that I've covered the timeline of events, here are the other additional items I'd like to address. My application has now been officially on file for eight weeks. During this time, not one single person from the county commissioner's office, specifically the three of you, has reached out to me. I'd like to remind you all that I was ready to pull my name from this position had the board not come to a decision during the May 21st meeting. From that May 21st meeting, you all thought it appropriate to give short notice, which was three business days for me to find time to fit this in my already planned work schedule. I also know of the upcoming Board of Adjustments meeting coming up on June 3rd. And due to this board's lack of timeliness on appointing someone, you are leaving me or whoever is appointed with no time to prepare for said meeting, which is very unprofessional and disrespectful. Per your own policy for appointments to the board, commissions and committees, the following people should seek applications. County commissioners, existing board, commission members, and others are encouraged to solicit citizens. From watching slash listening into the meetings as well as reading the meeting minutes, it appears this board left this all to one individual to seek application who was only capable of skimming it over. As someone is dragging their feet in the mud, do not sit by and let this individual create a poor reputation for the county process and don't let the applicant suffer, especially when it's a volunteer. Stand up and reach out. Nothing slash no one is stopping you from doing that. Commissioner Zoller, I would like to thank you for taking the time to actually read my application. Commissioner Zoller, you stated numerous times at the last meeting on May 21st that I was overqualified and to then be referred to by Commissioner Christopher as just a warm body, which is disrespectful and confusing for exactly what you as a board are looking for in an applicant. If you consider an overqualified applicant a warm body, the injustice in this board's ability to professionally handle volunteer application is alarming. When specifically, the individual who did the brief public outreach is incapable of using a phone, which is common practice in any professional organization if you wish to learn more about an applicant. Even more so, when this is called out during public meetings and the other two sitting board members did not step in to make the call. You adopted a policy back in February 2021 that outlines the goal for recruiting qualified volunteers. But it fails to outline how the board will do this and not lose qualified applications. Upon doing my own due diligence and reviewing agendas and meeting minutes, I discovered the planning department director had a reoccurring status update question on the Board of Adjustment vacancy since April 23rd. Commissioner Christopher, I was under the impression that when you got elected, your goal was to deal away with the good old boy system. In which the irony such truth is, that is your very premise for putting individuals in selected positions. I said it this way, as it became abundantly clear during last week's public meeting when you state applicant might be completely pro solar in a community that's against solar. And later you state, I think we have to do due diligence to the voters to make sure the candidates sitting on the board represents the people of the community. I question what community truly means to you. As it appears on all accords, that is your small circle of friends. I make this statement because again, according to the policy you helped facilitate and adopt, it states, uniform policies will promote general public confidence that persons with differing perspectives have an opportunity to participate in county government. This goes 100% against the statement you made on May 21st where you state in regards to my application. I've read the application. The application looks fine, but it doesn't go to someone's personal beliefs on growth development, economic development. You clearly are looking for those who align with one ideology, which is a great way of keeping the good old boys club alive and well. I find it also very interesting on how we arrived here today. Commissioner Christopher, you stated at the last two public commissioners' meetings on May 14th and May 21st that you do not know me and no one on the board knows me, which is why you all wanted me to do an interview. I found this reasoning very interesting because you and I have been Facebook friends since 2019 when you sent me a Facebook friend request. We have 44 mutual friends in common, which 23 of those know me very well. On my Facebook profile, you can easily see and gain some insight into who I am. But I cite your ignorance and inability to find qualified applicant for your district outside your close circle of friends based on your comment you made about me being a potential extremist Holocaust person. It appears from your remarks from the last meeting that you're, you only want someone that you're best friends with or the other commissioners are referring. That way you can blame them for your choice, for their choice, if that applicant turns out bad. This is horrible practice for any board as you all should be a unified front. You may disagree, but you need to keep it professionalized. You represent our county and the district I live in. There are people that even work in this county building that know me very well and which I believe has stated to this board, I would be a good fit. But clearly, that means nothing to you. Is it because you believe you are above them and don't respect slash value their opinion? In preparation for today's interview, I submitted a public disclosure request for the four current Board of Adjustment applicants, as well as that of the recently vacated position. I did this because I wanted to know what qualified them to the position that did not warrant an interview. I find it very interesting how this board determined that I needed an interview simply because they do not know me. This board appointed the latest Board of Adjustment position in July of 2023, two years after the policy that brings us all here today. This applicant left the question, what they would bring of value to the Board of Adjustment Committee blank. I'd like to also add that in my very own professional work experience, that the application is a crucial part of the hiring practice as it backs up on paper your choice selection. In reviewing the other current Board of Adjustment applicants, I would state my application would rank higher than two of the current board members, both of which did not go through an interview process. I also reached out to the Board of Adjustment Chairman and had a quick five-minute discussion in which I gave him my background and why I thought I would be a good fit. After that five-minute discussion with Neil Kaiser, I had his support to be on the Board of Adjustment. Feel free to reach out to him if you'd like to do your own due diligence. I'd also like to mention that I have the support of Mayor Dave Jones and Councilman Steve Johnson to be their district rep on the Board of Adjustment vacancy position. Feel free to reach out to them as well. Because of everything that has transpired and the negligence of this board to fill a vacant position on the Board of Adjustment in a timely manner due to this board's clear inability to work together, I strongly encourage this board to make it a policy that every applicant and re-applicant they get for a committee board commission go through this same interview process and set an official timeline. This is the only way you can truly deter the good old boy system. In closing, I'd like to use a quote from Charlie Brown, someone you are familiar with, Commissioner Christopher, good grief.
Thank you. And usually my seatmates comment first, but as chair, I'll, I'll speak first and profusely apologize to you personally and professionally. I've worked in and out of the county for almost 30 years and we've done board appointments during those times when I've sat on different committees. We never had an interview policy before. And I am still today not in favor of an interview policy. I believe we can pick up a phone and call people. We all know each other locally. There, your applications should be more than enough for a volunteer to take their time to come in to wannabe on a committee. There's more than enough ways to seek out rather than make you take your time and come in and sit before us. So I would like to apologize for that and I would, and you are right, I pulled this document and I am confused and I have disputed the interview policy in the past few weeks. And it is only a suggestion. There are appointment ways to do them where there are several ways we can do those appointments. And the appointment is not, to come in and interview is not a mandatory item. There's three or four ways you can do that and that is the choice of somebody if they'd like to visit with you and that's what was discussed. What I am apologizing for personally, too, is that I worked through this too long trying to work with my seatmate. I should have said no, I should have said I won't agree with an interview a few weeks ago, rather than trying to discuss why we have interviews or what we're doing and saying, well, if that's what you'd like to do, then I would like to, because we do try to honor each commissioner for their districts, for their appointees. But you're right, we need a timeline on that, definitely, if we continue with the interview. But that'll be a discussion for the future for us with this document. But thank you.
Well, we haven't had the interview yet. But I would, I would say first two things. That I find it very unfortunate that the chair of this board believes that was appropriate. I find it unfortunate. But the reason for an interview on individuals that we do not know is because there are things within an individual that you may not see on an application. One of those being professional temperament and how we might feel that individual might fit in on the board. So I, I do believe it is absolutely appropriate. And I've always believed it, which is the reason I drafted that policy two years ago, that anybody we don't know, we should have the ability to call them in for an interview. So that we can see who they are, what they think, what's in their head. Because I will dispute some of what you said in your statement. But if I live in a community that's 90% against solar power in this valley, I believe the people would want me to appoint someone who's 90% against solar panels in this valley. For me to not even ask the question when I make an appointment to somebody on the Board of Adjustments, not the planning commission, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners and we can either take it, leave it, have our own hearing, change it, do what we want with it. Board of Adjustments makes the final decision. We don't get a choice. If we don't like it or the public don't like the opinion of the Board of Adjustments and their final ruling, you get to take them to court. I think that means that we should know who we're appointing. And not just read an application because I, I'm not saying your application has anything inaccurate in it. But we've all filled out a job application. We've all kind of fudged a few things on a job application. It's our job to interview the people we don't know, that we can't vouch for that person. So I'm sorry you're upset. I've tried to have this interview process for weeks now and can't get permission to do it. But I am very happy that you came in because it allowed me to see your professional temperament.
There's, okay. I'm not going to address it. Go right ahead.
As always, I'm somewhere in the middle. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that, that you're trying to help out your community and you feel like it hasn't, your, your application was not taken seriously and that you were trying to follow the rules in the process and you feel that, you know, you've been wronged and I, I apologize for that very, very much. I would, I would mention that I originally thought that this was just a position for District Three because the Board of Adjustment is a five-member position. It could actually come from District One or District Three. And so because of that, I said, well, I didn't know this. I didn't know that was a position which is on me. We're just, we're all swamped with time and trying to get everything done that we need to get done. And I should have put out my feelers in my district earlier and tried to find someone. And I found that out too late and that's on me. It's not on you. In terms of you bringing forward your timeline, thank you very much. We have, you know, 23 departments and $65 million budget on top of serving on a bunch of other committees. And and don't even get me started on a jail problem. We have been extremely busy and things slip and every day things slip. And that is just part of when you're trying to do too much at any given time and it's not an excuse. And I'm not going to let it be an excuse other than to say I'm sorry. We should move quickly and we did, we are paying attention to that, you know, that date is coming up. And I will agree with Mr. Christopher that the BOA is a very important position because it's one of the very few positions where there is no elected oversight, other than the recall of that person. And when Commissioner Christopher was working on the, the draft agreement that we, the, the policies, which again, were, they've only been created once and we've, you know, looked at them. The interview process was put in there and we had a lot of discussions on that. So that would be something, because with the BOA, usually when people want on something, and I don't say usually, but it's very easy to tell when somebody is a one-person item and they're using it so that they can stop something. That's just, I'm just laying it out there. And so those interview processes, and I'm not accusing you of being that in any way, especially with your professional background and who you are. I'm just saying this is what we're used to seeing. And so, and, and I didn't, I've never, I don't think we've ever met. And so it's a pleasure to get to know you and meet you. I want to make sure that, that with an interview, that's not the case, that you're not in a one-item person who wants to get on there to stop a project or stop something. Because that doesn't do us service because when you're acting as the BOA, you're acting in essence as a quasi judicial manner. You are supposed to be impartial. It's, you're not supposed to be representing 90% of this or whatever percent of this. For example, like on conditional use permits, you're looking at it as this is conditionally permitted. You're setting the conditions of it and you need to be impartial in order to do that. And that's very, very important. And so that's why I was in favor of actually having an interview to make sure that you're not one of those people that, that is there to with an axe to grind or anything else. When it comes to the planning commission, it's a little bit different because it's in essence advisory. So as always, I'm in the middle and I wanted to thank you for coming in and thank you for, for airing how you feel. I take that very seriously and I'm sorry that you feel that way. I'm sorry, very sorry that you feel that, that statements have been made about you personally or that could affect you professionally when all you're trying to do is help your community. It's good to know that you're, you're involved in your community in the way you are and you believe in your community. I, other than that, questions I have is just, the only question I would have is, is that do you feel that you could be impartial in making those decisions and that you can look at the facts without leaving, while leaving your, your personal biases out of it?
I do that on a regular basis in my life, as well as my career with the Corps of Engineers. I have to take an unbiased approach on anything and everything. Going into anything, if you have a bias of I have to take an unbiased approach on anything and everything, going into anything, if you have a biased opinion, you're useless to the Board.
Thank you.
Mr. Christopher, would you like to finish?
So for the interview, that was the one question we were asking?
You can ask any questions you want.
My decision was wrapped up in professional temperament, so.
Chair, do you have any questions?
I do not.
My question is, are you guys going to make a motion on this today?
We'll discuss that, but I was gonna ask another question. In terms of, and, and you do your research, in terms of the Board of Adjustment, what do you see is, is the largest issues coming before the Board of Adjustment in the next few years? That are going to be time-consuming?
All the current economic impact, there's a pump storage project potentially going in, people are wanting to turn lands into trailer parks so they can accommodate housing for those areas. You guys keep saying the solar wind and solar projects throughout the county, those are always things because we are the renewable resource here. The fact that the carbon footprint is being reduced and now we're looking at renewables, how we're going to make that up. Again, I'm hydro power specific entity, I know that area very well. And so lots of things coming, lots of ideas trying to come into the county. You're always going to have someone who's going to want to turn their pasture into a solar field, a park, an amusement thing, a Speedway, you never know, until they show up. So you just got to be L or BL ready for it, as well as again, like I stated earlier. Being timely informed, so you can actually do your due diligence and actually look at all the facts and resources before making any kind of judgment call. And again, a unified board, you have a discussion with the Board members to kind of talk all things through.
Again, sir, you just backed up my point of an interview. You said that you should do your diligence, ask the questions, get the facts, so that you can make an educated decision. That was the purpose of having an interview.
You can also do that by picking up a phone and calling people that know me. Or when people come here and give me a good background.
Get to see what's on the phone, they don't get to hear what's on the phone. I believe in transparency, I believe in having all of the government's affairs done in this room.
Which is fine, and then we can still have the interview, but at least having the phone call, so I'm not sitting around for eight weeks until said meeting today.
Until last week, I couldn't get a second vote to approve an interview.
But I don't believe anyone stopped you from picking up a phone.
Any, anymore? I guess my, my other question is, is you're professional, you seems like you're on the road a lot. I, I see like you do that this is going to be, if anything, getting busier for the Board of Adjustment. Do you feel with, with all the other activities, you feel like you have the time to devote to this?
Yes, only because a meeting is scheduled out in advance, I can work around my schedule with that.
Okay, that's great to hear. Sure, for discussion, I would entertain a motion for the appointment to the Board of Adjustment.
And I will step down in seconds. Those in favor?
Well.
Or discussion?
The discussion. I believe the. The way that it is written, the member needs to bring, is supposed to bring, usually when we have appointments, you've got, well. The way it should be is, is you'd be bringing multiple names forward that the person from that district would choose two names to bring forward for a recommendation. The.
But I would remind my seatmate that this is not to. For one of the regular appointments at the start of the term, when we know well in advance, there's going to be an opening. This was an emergency opening, you might say. So it wasn't something that was, we had a lot of hindsight or had a lot of thought into, so.
No, I, I, I agree with that, this is a, this is a midterm opening, so we didn't go through the regular process. For advertising and everything else, which of course can, can have an impact and take, take additional time. I just wanted to make sure that, that there was not going to be a. An issue with my seatmate because you live in District Three. And this appointment can be from either District One or District Three and that we wouldn't have in essence of a veto of our conversation last time. Like we had when there was a, there was not two names brought forward by the individual or by the Commissioner. So I was just, I'm just working on the process there for discussion. And if there is, my way to deal with that would be is, is that. No one from District One submitted a name. So with that being said, being that this could be from District One or District Three, I have no, no issues with you being from District Three. But also you are representing the entire county.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's game.
Although opposed.
Opposed?
Nay.
Alright.
Motion passes.
Okay, I appreciate your guys' time and if anyone would like, my reference is all in here for all my research I performed, as well as my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that is it for our morning.
Madam Chair, I would move to recess for the lunch hour.
One second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you, see you at one o'clock. Good afternoon, welcome back to the Clickjack County afternoon session for the Board of County Commissioners from May twenty-eighth. And we're going to begin with a continuation of a public hearing of Public Works concerning the Dallas Port Water Rights. Waste water rates, I guess that is. So we'll open the public hearing, the purpose of the hearing is to consider, consider the proposed resolution to increase the Dallas Port sewer rate effective June first, twenty twenty-four. Public testimony was accepted on this matter until Friday, May twenty-fourth at five P M. The hearing is closed for taking any further public testimony. And did you receive any more testimony? Okay.
We didn't.
And so does the Board have any clarifying questions on statements or?
Just clarification statements? And no clarification statement?
Or you can ask more questions of staff? You've been grilled. So any discussion by the Board?
I guess I have one clarification question.
Microphone?
Thank you, sir. I have one clarification question. We have. Appendix A of the old resolution, do we still use that for E R U assignments? And is that applicable with the changes in law since two thousand and four? And the state recommendations for E R Us per?
Yes, it's still.
It's, it's still within? Okay.
I know I have one question, so today's hearing is specifically about raising rates.
That is correct.
And with that, if I've received some further questions on the budget, but we can work on that after the packs.
Yeah, we, we typically do the budget, you know, when we do budget, this, this is just about rates.
Just about rates?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And I believe Pam, we had a small air and I think Pam, I know Pam fixed it and sent it out to everybody and it's been posted on the website.
Okay, thank you. So. Would entertain a motion if you could.
Anything else? Okay. Madam Chair, excuse me, before us, we have a resolution to increase the Dallas Port Sewer Rate per E R U by five percent and the connection fee by three percent. My motion is to approve.
A second for the sake of discussion.
Motion in a second, so for discussion.
Clarification, we don't need to determine. The second part of that. Which is the capital, non-capital type stuff, we're just dealing with the, that number.
We just gave it to you as, as an example. That's all we did. Now we don't have to deal with that right now.
Good enough.
Great. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was very quick, I'm glad you're here early, Margaret. So we have Mid Columbia Fisheries with an update on the Snyder Creek Restoration Project at the mill site, Clickitat Mills.
Dave Lindley from Yakima Nation with me, although you're only presenting on one side, but he can answer all the hard questions.
Okay.
I don't remember how I did this before, did I use my computer or? Yeah.
Thank you.
But not the right one.
It shouldn't be a USB in there.
Is there an adapter? Oh.
Micro USB.
But I did bring it on a thumb drive.
Are you just, it's a hundred year already?
Yeah, and it's.
Can you just log into our Zoom and share your screen? Is that what?
Yeah.
Let's do that, let's log into our Zoom and you just will get your version of the screen.
Did someone send me a Zoom invite?
Or if you get a Zoom, you have the app on there?
Yeah.
Okay, so just enter our code and you should be good.
Sounds like you got all finished up the canyon this year and everybody's happy.
We did, yeah, we resurfaced the road all the way to the gate, so I think all the neighbors are happy.
Good, yeah, I actually got a nice email.
Okay.
Saying that they were happy with it and it went well.
Oh, that's great.
Bada bing.
Yeah.
You shared a green anyway.
Yeah.
There we go.
I did it. Okay.
Except now you have to like change each page on your own.
That sounds very easy.
Most of the time people forward things to me and I'm up here changing their pages for them.
Well, thank you for having us and I'm just here really to give you guys an update on the, our restoration planning at the old mill site on Snyder Creek. So we came and we presented a year ago about this. So in twenty twenty-one, Mid Columbia Fisheries was awarded a grant from the Salmon Recovery Funding Board to do restoration planning on Snyder Creek, on the county's property, but also on private property upstream. And does it sound good? Guys can hear me well? Okay. So we're just about wrapping up that first grant, so timing's great for an update. And I think that the commissioners all know, you received, the county received a grant from Department of Ecology to do some subsurface investigations on your property on the old industrial site. And I think that's a super step forward for the whole process, both for redevelopment planning and for restoration planning. So good job, congratulations, I think that's really awesome. So the grant we have is from Salmon Recovery Funding Board, they divide design processes into three steps, conceptual, preliminary and final. And we're in that very first step, conceptual, which is just what it sounds like, a concept. So our goals for the restoration planning are to improve conditions for fish and for people and wildlife. To restore a more natural channel through the stream site, thank you. And to provide room for floodwaters of Snyder Creek on that site. So one of our kind of sideboards is that we don't want to make flooding worse in the town of Clickitat. We've learned a lot through this process, so that twenty twenty-one grant covered up a large project area. So the county's property, but also private property downstream and upstream. And so we've been looking at each kind of piece of that site. And we've divided it into really that hardened industrial area, the old mill pond and the former log sorting yard above there. And the team, the planning team is Mid Columbia Fisheries, Yakima Nation, who Dave Lindley is here from Yakima Nation. And the landowners, which is you guys and private landowners, and then the consulting firm is Interflue out of Hood River. So the county's property goes from downstream of that building, let's see, does my mouth show up? Yeah, so right about here somewhere is the county property line. And we have a good concept design that, that you guys reviewed last year.
Look back.
Looks like this, sure.
There's a question, I, there's a house in the middle of the flume up there.
Yes.
What was that?
That was the old, the, that was a mill building that some people in this room probably know better than I do. But it was a storage shed as part of the mill. And I actually have a, a picture of it from what it looked like in there, before it was converted. So the county sold that piece above that building, above here, to a private landowner. And he converted that shed into kind of a off-the-grid cabin recreational residence.
Say it looks nice and new and I'm trying to figure out, well, that's an interesting location.
It is an interesting location.
But I don't understand that out there.
You might, did?
The building was there for years, it used to say, be careful, stenciled in blue and was kind of infamous locally, but yeah, it's been, it's had a facelift.
Yeah.
Margaret, can you re-put where you, you said the line is?
Yeah, it's like right around this building, I think this building is actually partly on the county and partly on private, so it kind of cuts across.
That whole building is on the guy who owns that little house. I think the lower, the lower building is on us.
This, this building's on you.
Yeah, that building's on us, that building is not ours.
Okay, maybe it's down here, sorry.
Yeah, I think it's right in the middle of that property or that, that concrete area.
I have a better picture of that house too. But starting just kind of on the downstream end, this is what our concept design looks like for the county's property. So inset floodplain with a kind of what we would call a dominant low-flow channel, so keep the water together in the low-flow season, which is pretty long. It's a small stream. But also have additional capacity for floodwaters through there. So right now the stream is in that concrete flume and it zooms through the site with, you know. The, the point of that flume was to convey wire, water across the site in an efficient, rapid way. And it does that really well, which is not great fish habitat. There was a fish passage project done at the site in early two thousands, fish are moving through both upstream and downstream through here. Well, so that was a successful project. We'd like to do better than just move fish through this site. So this, this is a concept, it, you can see. Kind of in that inset picture that the idea would be like add wood, get trees going, remove a lot of concrete. So the grant you're working, that you, the county. The idea would be like add wood, get trees going, remove a lot of concrete. So the grant year work that the county has now from Department of Ecology would. Really inform this a lot by understanding, you know, what we're dealing with below the concrete. So I think it's a great step. I would love to be back here in six or eight or 12 months talking to you about. What you, you know, what the county's found out and how we can move this design forward. We're not proposing anything right now until. More is learned through that Department of Ecology grant. This is the lower end of the county's property and State Parks has a. Ownership right through, right through there. I can show you right, kind of along here. They'd like to open the, the Clickitat Trail through this site. I believe they are working on a design for a bridge there. We are supportive of that, of course, and also it would be great if that bridge was closer to the existing box culvert on, at Highway 142. We've had conversations with county folks and with the state parks and everybody seems sort of open to that, but there's a lot of things to figure out before that can happen. But I would just say, as the county is sort of planning for development at this site, that's a really important consideration for the low end. There's a better view of that house. So we're moving upstream now more on to the private property. We're not proposing any. Restoration concept for the private parcel that includes that house. The landowner there is supportive of stream restoration, but he also likes his house and we couldn't really come up with a concept that made economic sense and would. Work there in the current configuration. So we're just proposing to leave that area alone. But then moving further upstream, this is the, obviously the smokestack and this area is owned by a different private landowner. So from the smokestack up. And she's really interested in restoration. And so our current. We're currently kind of focused on working with her. At this point, we're applying for another Salmon Recovery Funding Board grant to move the concept design on this up, upstream piece from conceptual all the way to final. So looking, this is kind of looking down valley at the, at the area above the mill. And this was the old log sorting yard. Where's my mouse? So you can see the smokestack right there. So this looks a lot more natural to all of us, but it is not in any kind of a natural shape. So the stream runs along the South Valley Wall. So the stream was relocated to this. Location sometime after 1947. And, you know, just to allow room for mill operations to use the whole flat valley. And the stream is basically in a ditch shape there. It's deep. And swift. You can see along the North Valley Wall, there's some water inputs that come in there. So we've been working on a concept design for that area to still look at what the log sorting yard looked like in 1982. These. I love these historical pictures. They're from the Clickitat Museum and I think they really give us a good sense of what. Sort of what it looked like before. There's another picture of the valley. Can just see how that stream is pushed up in, in, against the valley wall and in a more natural configuration, it would have. Been more in the middle, meandering through that valley. So this is an aerial from 1947 that, did you find this, Dave? I don't know where this came from. But you can, you can. Probably see the stream, you know, we're not 100% sure that that's the stream, but it sure looks like it probably is. So in. Prior to 1947, or at least at the time of this photo. The stream was not pushed up against the valley wall. So there was a road against that South Valley Wall and then the stream was more in the center. And that is a similar to the concept design that we have for that upstream piece. So our, our design would put that stream back in the, in the center. This is a better picture of that North Valley Wall where you can see water coming in. And there's even kind of little wetlands through there. So just what the stream looks like, it's very ditch-like through this part of the. What was the old log sorting yard? There's one of those wetland areas on the North Valley Wall. So the concept design will connect those. So it would move the road to the South Valley Wall and put the stream more in the middle. And it's, again, a dominant low-flow channel, but room for floodwaters to move, really give the stream a lot of room. So kind of take that energy away, like right now, the water's just whooshing down toward the. County property and toward the Clickitat, but this would slow and spread floodwaters, add a lot of wood to really slow them down, slow floodwater down. And kind of reactivate the floodplain so the water can dissipate into the groundwater. We're pretty excited about this concept, as is the landowner. And this is a, just a image from the hydraulic modeling. So. I talked with the commissioners last year about the hydraulic modeling for Bull Snyder Creek and the. Clickitat River. So what this shows is like an average high flow and how the concept would. The green is where water would go in an average high flow in that log sorting yard area. The blue is the current creek. So currently at 100-year flood, the creek doesn't get out of the channel. So the goal is that it would be out of the channel really regularly every year inundating the floodplain there, but make, the water would make its way back to the channel prior to. The next property down.
Did you say that it currently, the 100-year, it wouldn't pop out of the current channel?
Doesn't leave the channel.
No.
In the 100-year flood.
In the 96, it didn't pop out of there?
Not in this location.
Oh, it didn't?
No.
No.
It's 11 feet deep on average, so it is a very efficient mover of water. Yeah.
A lot of volume.
Yeah.
So they built, when they dug it, they built a berm on it as well.
There are parts of a remnant burn on the upstream side, yeah, as well. Probably like a dig and pitch type of thing.
We've learned a lot with this grant. So we have those three monitoring, groundwater monitoring wells that the county approved were installed in December of 2022. This picture kind of shows where, where we, where we're learning things about groundwater and water, all those different colored points. So there were monitoring wells. In the early 2000s, we were able to get those well logs and look at the data from them. Those wells weren't in very long, but the new wells were still collecting data from there. We're learning a lot of. Great things about how groundwater moves throughout this site. It's pretty complex. So in some parts of the site up higher in the. Upper reaches of the former industrial site, the. The stream is gaining water from the groundwater, but as you move down closer to the Clickitat River, the groundwater is going down. So classic alluvial fan. The consultant is estimating how, how fast water is moving through the site underground, which is really interesting and where those like gaining and losing reaches are. And. In the fall, Dave's team did a. Kind of a study of how, where there's water and where there's not at the lowest times of the year, and that'll inform the, you know, final design. So really interesting data on. Surface water and groundwater and how they interact. And even though our grant is coming to an end, Yakima Nation is going to continue to monitor the elevation of the groundwater in those wells and continue to look at how, how the. Stream functions in its lowest flows. We've learned a lot about flooding. Oops. And I, I think I presented on flooding last year. So just as a reminder, one of the big. Take homes is that the big flooding risk to Clickitat is from the Clickitat River, which I think we knew, but it, the modeling supports that. So this image shows Snyder Creek at a. 100-year flood and the Clickitat River at a 50-year flood. The modeling shows that even on 100-year flood, all of Snyder Creek can fit through the box culvert under Highway 142. The issue is that when the Clickitat River is in flooding, it pushes up through that culvert and then comes. Into town around through Snyder Creek and around through those ball fields. So. Would continue to refine the hydraulic model and it also, as we do designs, we can run those designs through the hydraulic model and see what their impact is on both low and high flow, which is really a great tool. Yakima Nation's learning a lot about fish.
It's a very busy slide. We just have one slide to cover all that we've been looking at in regards to fisheries. A few. Take-home points here. One, this is a site where we do annual monitoring. So that's what the left is to show, is that every year we do a single pass electrofish. Collect juvenile steelhead and pit tag them. And then we have a pit tag array. So we're able to see when they leave this system. And so from 2014 to 2023, we've pit tagged nearly 6,000 fish. So that gives us a pretty good sense of what those juvenile fish are doing. 41% of the fish that we tagged exited Snyder Creek. So they're showing at least some anadromous movement. We've looked at those fish that left Snyder Creek and did an analysis to see where they subsequently detected. And that helped us figure out the range of dates that fish utilize Snyder Creek when it's accessible. There's water across the alluvial fan and that's pretty much from mid-November to mid-May every year. So as part of our design, you know, we had a couple of principles, basically to do no harm. One, we didn't want to increase flooding. And two, we didn't want to decrease the, the period of time that Snyder Creek is accessible to fish. Additionally, we've been doing red counts in Snyder Creek for a couple of decades, but since we last updated you all, we have red counts for 2022 and 2023. And we have between those two years, 14 documented steelhead reds within the project reach. So even though this isn't a great reach as is for fish, because we have 120 concrete weers and we have. The creek confined into a ditch, basically, we still have steelhead using it. So we think that gives us a good indication of just what the potential is in this system for, for fish production.
Were, were you finding many reds in the area that we, we actually fixed last time? Not the concrete, but that part in between?
The, the part in between where there's the logweer section, we do see a few, I think of these 14, a, a couple of them were in there and the rest were in this former log sorting yard reach.
Okay.
So there you.
Even with that channelized steep, you're finding reds in there.
Yeah, which is pretty amazing. Yeah, so they get through the flume and then they use that, you know, kind of swift water, steep reach, but there, there are some kind of step pools, but.
As you say, are they, are they pushing off and doing it like on the gravels on the side or are they doing it? In the current, current, current?
Where they can find little patches of gravel, which is, is pretty limited. Yeah. In one of the slides that Margaret had early on, there was a landslide that came in earlier this year that. Inputs some gravel, so maybe they'll use that through time. But that's part of the goal of our restoration is that, you know, reconnecting the floodplain and the hill slopes would allow those gravel inputs and good spawning material. Where right now that gets input and for the most part, it gets flushed downstream.
Is there, is there any wild? See, there's my microphone. Is there any wild Chinook in the click that?
There are spring Chinook in very limited numbers. We do not see them using Snyder Creek. We see some coho.
Yet.
Yep. I like your optimism.
Any more fish questions? So it, we've learned a ton. This has been a really interesting project. This is a colorized picture of the old mill that I think is really cool and it's fun to think about what it used to look like, what it looked like before it was a mill, what it looked like as a mill. What it, what it looks like now. And to imagine what it might look like in the future. There are examples of. Sites like this and worse being restored and. That, these can be really exciting projects. It can be hard projects. I think the county is on the right track with your current grant. This is Pringle Creek in Salem. It was a former log mill. That's the, you know, after the mill was closed picture. This is what it looks like a couple of years ago it was restored. John Day, the city of John Day has an old pine mill in this area and, and they're working on a plan for restoration and redevelopment that'll include. A lot of the kinds of things, the ideas that have been bounced around for the Clickitat Mill, multi-use jobs and. Other things. They haven't started this project, but it's a really, it's fun to watch. They're ahead of us and an interesting analog. There's other out, out there like the old mill district in Bend. If you've been shopping, there is a giant shopping center that used to be a mill. And then. The city of Bellingham is working on redevelopment of the old Georgia Pacific Paper Mill. That's a work in progress, but they've gotten going on parts of it. So. Definitely happened throughout the country, definitely happening in the Pacific Northwest and. I, I think Clickitat is a jewel. It's super cool and beautiful and, and. I, I think all of Clickitat County is getting discovered and the time is good to plan this. And so I really appreciate the county's. Leadership and getting that grant and working towards learning more. And I just encourage you and hopefully inspire you to keep going in that, in that vein. So that's my update and I'm open to questions for you guys.
So. State Parks is willing to potentially push that right-of-way down closer to the other bridge?
They are open to it, but there are, you know, they wanted to know about wetlands and other, you know, what other. Considerations. I'm not sure if they would need to maintain the old right-of-way because of the rail-to-trail thing. And, and then pick up a new right, you know what I mean? Like keep the old right-of-way in case the railroad ever came back, but move the trail. Towards 142.
Are they required to? Are they required to keep it, keep those rails-to-trails available for railroads to come back?
I think that's the whole rail banking concept.
They, they can move it though.
They can move it.
Yeah, because we went through that in the court system and they defined that even if they. Change areas or switch, if the railroad needs to improve the grade or something, they actually can buy it back and change it again. And that leaves it in the rail banking, it preserves it.
Right.
And then would you come back out and go around those other buildings there to the north? I don't know if it's a water treatment plant or something up there, whatever that is. Was.
Well, I, I think there's been discussion, I've heard about that being a potential PUD, something with the PUD or. People in this room know more about that than I do, but I would say that when you're looking at planning for that part, you really want to consult with PUD and make sure like the plan works for all of the governments.
I didn't know if we were thinking about going around, coming back out and going around it or staying close to the road and going around at that side if you guys had discussions.
So far, planning has been using the existing culvert under 142.
Okay.
In that alignment and kind of leaving that north side for potential redevelopment.
I can try to find that image, but I was thinking, was that your question, Commissioner Anderson? Let me find that image.
Get it down here and bring it next to where the, the bridge is and then maybe keep the trail next to the culvert here versus coming back out.
Making a loop, yeah. I don't know if there's enough room in front of there. It's kind of steep there.
I don't know, but.
It's a good question. I don't know. The fisheries people probably don't actually care.
Yeah.
Right? Like we're more interested in really where, right along the stream.
Right. But I do like getting it closer to the culvert down there. Otherwise, you're going to be making a sharp bend earlier to come back in to get it through that culvert. And then building another, another bridge.
Either way, there's probably going to be a second bridge because there isn't room on Highway 142, but, but. If the two bridges were near each other, that would facilitate restoration and other uses of the site.
Yeah, obviously we can't speak for state parks, but they seem pretty amendable to, to ideas around their trail. They just want continuity through this location.
If it could go in the front, Jake, like you were talking about, it makes more sense because it connects with that left-hand side. That's a straight shot along the highway there for where the railroad used to go.
Which they are planning, I think, some sort of boardwalk trail around that corner there along the highway.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Your riparian zone, will that be a total setback? I mean, as we think about the future, what properties left for doing things with? The green that you had for riparian zone, that'll be kind of no touch. Let's keep it.
That image shows a 200-foot corridor with the streams sort of. That image shows a two-hundred-foot corridor with the streams sort of meandering within it. And I don't remember what the shoreline management zone setback is.
Fifty-foot setback in industrial zone.
Okay. We're proposing something more so that grant funding could help support it.
So I thought when you originally came in, you were hoping we would be good with three hundred feet. And we all kind of were kind of, eh, I kind of liked three hundred, but I kind of liked the whole thing being a park and a nature area. A hiking trail and whatnot, but I think the majority of the board said two is easier. So maybe that's where you got the two.
Yeah, we discussed, yeah, narrower, middle and wider.
Yeah.
The, what you could do in that two hundred feet is a good question. Like, could you have a walking path? Probably, right? Could you have a cement building? Maybe not. Although really you can't go downhill from what the site looks like now. So. Yeah.
Well, you could. It, it's a little worse.
Well, you've came a long ways.
Yeah.
Yeah. Stuck with it.
Yeah.
From the long haul.
To me, I guess I would say it's, it's encouraging, encouraging to know what could happen there. And I will, I guess I would say be encouraged if it happens in my lifetime.
Sure.
It should.
These projects take time, right? And complicated projects with complicated sites take time. But I think, I think the timing is good to be starting and to be looking at what's, what the constraints are in terms of what's underground and then taking this to the next level of design. And just step by step, finding, finding a collective path forward here. I think it's good timing because of the interest in this area and the desire in the town to see something else happen here. And the just overall interest in the gorge. The gorge is on the map. Clickatat is really special. And we'll be getting more and more people coming to it undoubtedly, like we're seeing in other parts of the county.
Well, you know, it's a lot of years of following that degradation and cleanup and seeing what we could do with it, where it's moving underground. And I, I feel like this time that study is actually going to be our last one that tells us.
Yeah.
We finally got it figured out.
Yeah.
So I'm waiting for Department of Ecology.
Yeah.
So what's your, what's your estimated timeframe? It sounds like you're going to go for a grant package to fix that upper section this year or this next year. When would you be hoping to, to move forward with this section through?
Is your question, when will we be applying for final design for the county's property? I would love to be in a conversation with the commissioners next winter if you're ready for that. And if the investigations under the ground reveal something that causes more concerns, then maybe that timeline will be slower. Or if it just takes more time to do those investigations, then it might be the year after. In terms of the upstream work, we're applying now and that design will take a year and a half. So the earliest implementation would be twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, probably more like twenty twenty-seven. Great. Well, thank you so much for having us.
Yeah, thanks for the update.
And thanks for letting him get a word in edgewise.
My part, my role was easy.
Hey. Any unfinished business? For anyone?
How did, I was hoping to get an update on how your guys' meeting in Skamania County went after I turned around and came back with my truck issues.
It was really a good meeting. Yeah, we covered a lot of, I can't even think of everything we covered.
Well, it said, I mean, you had a couple of items on there, but it said it also, I was reading an article of somebody that reported on it. That said that there was potential for another meeting in a couple of months as things go along. Is that the case? And that is.
I've kind of committed to work forward with ASA on a few things we have in common and just get together more often, even coffee, just to keep, keep in touch more often. Nothing formal.
Okay.
So that was a good meeting.
Yesterday I did attend the White Salmon Memorial for Memorial Day. And it was held at the White Salmon Cemetery. It was an awesome event and they honored all the vets. I think there was over a hundred and fifty people there is what my estimate would be. They had a flyover, presentation of flags and arms. It was really a neat event. And then they honored fallen vets that happened in the last year and gave flags to their families. They have a walk of honor and it has more than three hundred plaques on it already, where locally people have had vets pass away and they buy them a plaque and they had a flag in each one. So it was, it was really a neat presentation. A lot of people there. So that was a good one.
Update I can give is our indicative rating for credit agencies. And we've got a BBB minus for the bridge. So we are investment grade. So that'll help through the process of getting our TFI alone, which was a, a big lift to get to this point. We'll see if we can get that bumped up from a minus to a plus at some point, but it was still good news.
Yeah. Any update?
I did not have any board meetings last week.
That's all I know.
Honey, anything for our Thursday discussion that we want to discuss beforehand to prep for how you guys would like the discussion to go on Thursday?
Personally, I'm going to need to know, just like we do a budget and go through, I'm going to need to know how things were arrived at and how a number got there or how a number didn't get there. And just work through the book. I'm hopeful that eventually, which it sounds like it's not tomorrow, but eventually the board opens it as a, a public meeting and allows the public to ask questions about what was in the book. But yeah, no, I have questions on how we arrived at, at different.
And you may want to reach out in between now and then and use your time with Jen privately.
I prefer to do things with transparency. Thank you.
So I don't know how much in-depth we'll get.
If you do not want to allow in-depth, then that's.
That's not what I said. I didn't know how in-depth we will get. I did not say I would not allow in-depth, Mr. Christopher. I just don't want this to turn into a kick the can down the road session. So do as much investigation with the document as you can in between the time you were given the document up until the meeting time. It'd be, it'd be great to come to the table informed.
I guess I'm well-informed. My questions are ready to roll. And I can't wait to be able to ask.
So I guess that was the question. If you're looking to do a deep dive into the, the back of the doll, of all the numbers, that's good for staff to know that, that be prepared that that's going to be the direction you would like to do it. As is, we'll explain this number all the way through it. I mean, we've got all day. We can.
Well, that was my other question. Do we have all day? Because it's on the calendar to be over at noon. So we have other topics plus over, well, isn't it on the?
No, I think we just have the two topics.
We've got franchise agreement and jails, all I see.
Yes. And we can go as long as we want. And we'd already talked about that, that we could.
I don't, it's not on the.
I didn't see it.
I think in the posted agenda is what I was trying to get to. Okay. So it says, it, it, on the agenda, it says nine o'clock, Potts and Associates. And then it says discussion on franchise agreements in jail. So my question was to make sure that we could go if we needed to go. And people didn't schedule things to do in the afternoon, so we couldn't go. I'll be ready to go all afternoon if needed.
Good, good to know.
I will, I, I will be ready to have workshop for as long as workshop dates.
And I sent an email this morning to Carmen asking if, because I sent the prioritized list of questions over, if she'll be having any answers for us that would help in the discussion on Thursday, but I have not got a response back yet. If there's nothing else, for the good of the order, I would make a motion to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting until May thirtieth at nine AM.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.